Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the town of Superior Town Council for Monday, May 12, 2025. Can we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Shannon.
Mayor Mark Lasis.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Jason Serbo.
Here.
Councilmember Jen Cowish.
Here.
Councilmember Stephanie Miller. Councilmember Neil Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Foster.
Here.
Councilmember Heather Craycraft. Town manager Matt Magley.
Here.
Town attorney Nicholas Hartman.
Here.
All right, up next is approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda that any council members would like to make?
I want to poll six E.
I'd like to poll six F, please. Any other changes? I'll entertain a motion to approve with six E and F polled.
So moved.
We've got a motion from council member Shaw. Second from Mayor Lasis. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. And we are on to our council reports. Who'd like to go first tonight?
I'll go first. I wanted to announce the veterans meetup for Memorial Day. A couple reminders. One, Memorial Day is not a celebration. Just putting that out there for people. So at Pat's Tap on Monday, May 26, we're going to have our, we normally have a veterans meeting on the Sunday, last Sunday of the month, but we've canceled that and we're going to have the meeting at Pat's Tap, who's actually a veteran as well. And just a little Easter egg about Pat's Tap is they keep a gift card behind the bar that anybody can at any time put money on for veterans to get drinks. So if that's something of interest, if you don't want to go on Memorial Day, if you go there before then, there'll be a bunch of veterans there on Memorial Day. So if that card's loaded up, that wouldn't be terrible for them. And just a reminder, Wednesday, the farmer's market, I think a lot of people are very excited about that. So thank you to the staff that is making that happen. It is all the talk at the elementary school. Chat with the chief on Saturday at nine o'clock at the community center. And then just a reminder, the last day of school is May 22nd. And the pools are going to open the next day after that. So also very exciting. I think that's it for me. Yeah.
Thanks, Jen. Neil?
I can go. No major updates. A quick shout out and thanks to town staff and the Boulder County Sheriff's Office for the graduate parade that was on Saturday. For those that don't remember, this started back in 2020 during the pandemic. It's the five-year anniversary and it's actually kind of cool that we're still doing it. A lot of other communities started this and they stopped it. This one seemed to have been really long, or maybe it's just because my kids were in it. But yeah, either way, thanks again for that. And that's it for me.
Thanks, Neil. Mike?
Every Friday, the town manager puts out a kind of a weekly update of things and I'll just, I just want to acknowledge that I was really excited to read that the summer concert series in downtown, the last two are going to be moved to the Plaza in downtown. And I just think that that's going to be a huge opportunity for businesses to get foot traffic and a really great way to showcase downtown. So I'm just really excited for town staff to make that accommodation and hopefully support downtown businesses. So thank you for that.
Thanks, Mike. Jason?
Yeah, just real quick. I attended the Chamber of Converse small business meeting and it was a really fantastic get together. And the biggest thing I took away from that, from a lot of the businesses was the feeling of brand recognition and trying to get branding out. That's one of the biggest things that I think we're trying to do as a council, especially on economic development, is trying to champion our small businesses and the businesses that invest in the town. So we're going to continue to work together with that with the chamber. And yesterday was Mother's Day and I just want to give a real quick shout out. I was building a house and I'm not a mason at all, although I do know how to lay brick and do things like that. And I did a horrible, horrible job at something recently doing that. It just made me think of my grandmother, who oddly enough was a mason. My great-grandfather in Macedonia was a master builder. He didn't have sons, he had daughters. So my grandmother was the oldest. She became a mason. And it just made me think of her, you know, and think of all the sacrifices that women make in order to support the men in their lives.
All of them. We make all of the sacrifices.
You do? I mean, yeah. I mean, we, let's be honest, okay? Women are the better sex than men are. Let's, you know, but um, so I just wanted to give an extra shout out. Yesterday was Mother's Day and I'm very, very thankful for, you know, my mother who came to this country from a separate one. My grandmother came from another country as well. And just the bravery a lot of women have in pushing forward and making, making just your livelihood so much, much easier. So a big thank you to the moms out there. Happy Mother's Day. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Good evening, everyone. Good to see you all. A couple of things to report. Last Wednesday, I attended the Alta Flatirons Groundbreaking. So over on, across McCaslin and downtown Superior on Block Eight, there is a new 251 mixed-use project. So 251 residences and then some commercial right on the corner there, McCaslin and Main Street. So they broke ground. They said that their anticipated schedule is going to run about two years before they're completed. So it's a, it's a large building, five stories. And it's, you know, obviously going to be a transformative, you know, structure and component of downtown Superior. So really excited to see that get underway, albeit it was probably the muddiest groundbreaking you can possibly imagine, given, given the rain that we got last Wednesday and Tuesday. Separately, last council meeting I reported on the presentation that we gave to Chaffa for the Penrose Project Kite Route Crossing. So I'm happy to announce that Penrose was successful in their application to Chaffa. So they got the state funding that they were looking for. So hopefully that project continues to just kind of move forward. And we'll have our first senior affordable project in downtown Superior, right behind the Block Eight project that just broke ground as well. And then just to reiterate, this Wednesday will be our first summer market in downtown Superior from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. right along Main Street. So we'll have vendors, we'll have live music, we'll have food, things that you can buy. It'll be a really good time. The weather looks like it's going to be great. So we look forward to seeing you all at our summer markets. Those are going to be every month on the second or third Wednesday of the summer. So kind of mid-month on Wednesday nights, summer market in downtown Superior. It's going to be a great new event. So thanks to Michaela and just town staff for putting that together. And that's all I've got. Town manager?
For the council, staff's going to be in the civic space in downtown Superior next, starting next week. So we're able to give tours to the council, any council member that's interested. So you can reach out to me, Michaela, or Leslie, and we can get you set up for that. That's it.
Are we renting, just to follow up on that, are, for community members who are interested in renting any space, like they can rent at the community center, is that available yet? Or when will that be available?
I'll have to check and see, but I don't believe it's available right now. But I'll follow up with you on that.
All right, thanks. Town attorney?
Nothing for me.
Town clerk? All right, we're on to public comment on items on our consent agenda presentations and non-agenda items. If you'd like to give public comment, you're here in the council chambers, please sign up at the desk there with your first and last name and the town in which you reside. If you're participating via Zoom and you'd like to give public comment, you can participate by using the raise hand feature and we will call on you in the order in which your hand is raised. We do have public hearings tonight? Do we have a public hearing? Yes. Oh, that's setting a public hearing. Okay, so that's not actually a public hearing. So if you'd like to give public comment on any of the agenda items, you can do so. At this time, you can also give public comment when we reach those agenda items as well. So without further ado. Mr. Cuffler?
George Cuffner, 7520 West Coal Creek Drive. I got a question about the consent agenda D. It's the towing that we're going to change. I was wondering if we're going to be able to tow off of private roads. Because like over across the street, some of them are ours and some of them are theirs. Mine is a private road, but it's public to get to it. So I'm curious and I need an answer just not a, if you guys don't want to tell me right now, I need an email because I come up here and talk to you guys. And I never get no emails. It's like you guys are too busy. You leave here and, you know, if you don't do it right now, I probably won't get an answer. But I really need to know an answer on that. So can anybody give it to me? Or are you going to send it to me in an email?
We typically don't do back and forths on, on public comment. So we can get back to you, George.
With an email?
We can get back to you.
Because if not, I'll be back in two weeks and we'll try again. What's the difference?
Yeah. And, and, and just for the public's understanding, item 6D is consideration of an ordinance regarding towing vehicles. It's a first reading. It'll come back at our next meeting for a second reading. All right. Anybody else here for public comment?
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I wanted to provide some feedback about the behavior and confirmation bias of this board. Over the past few board meetings, several members apparently are so upset over what's happening in Washington. It's causing great internal angst. President Trump has deployed the Department of Government Efficiency, and if that isn't an oxymoron, I don't know what is. They've managed to lay off a small percentage of government workers. I see two things happening here. First, government getting a dose of traditional business policy. I never saw anyone crying when I or my colleagues got laid off, numerous times, I would point out. Secondly, you don't like it because it's not how you view government should manage themselves. And by extension, they are doing something you don't like. Much like how, I don't like how this board has targeted aviation at Rocky Mountain Metro. President Trump has implemented a whole bunch of policy changes like immigration reform and trade tariffs, both policies that seem to have the socialists and Democrats as locally as well as nationally up in arms. Again, I get it. It's not your cup of political tea. But that is just a reflection of your biases. Trump was duly elected president. By popular vote, I would point out, and by the Electoral College, he even stormed and breached that so-called blue wall of Democrats, again, causing such angst amongst this board. I would say this is because of the board's bias and the inability to look beyond that which contradicts their bias. But there's one thing this board does have in strong agreement with President Donald Trump. They both have a strong dislike, in your case, probably hatred, for their local airport. Trump has repeatedly filed lawsuits against Palm Beach County Airport over aircraft going to and from Palm Beach International, allegedly affecting Mar-a-Lago. Trump first filed a lawsuit in 1995, and in typical Trumpian fashion, this lawsuit was just a precursor to negotiations, as Trump ended up leasing 215 acres from the county on which he built the 18-hole Trump International Golf Club. In July 2010, Trump filed another lawsuit, aiming to stop the airport from constructing a second commercial runway. That suit was also dismissed. Trump filed a third lawsuit against the county in January 2015, seeking $100 million in damages for creating an unreasonable amount of noise, emissions, and pollution at Mar-a-Lago. Change Mar-a-Lago with Superior and you have the exact same arguments the town attorney likes to make. So my comments got cut off because of the printer. So what I'm going to say is, it's kind of funny and humorous to me that you share so much in, when it comes to aviation, you share so much in parallel with President Trump. And I know that must just burn you up. And it just makes me crack up and makes it, makes me just laugh immensely. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Any additional public comment here in the boardroom? All right, seeing none. Turn to Zoom. Anybody on Zoom like to give public comment? All right, seeing no hands raised. Public comment is closed. And we will move on to item four, which is our presentation section of the agenda. And we've got a concept plan on Block Seven.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm Renee Stavros, Town Staff Planning and Building Department. This evening, we have Ryland Reed with Impact Sports, Matt Bodenchuk with JBR, and Mark Shaker with Stanley Concepts here to present a concept plan for Block Seven, Lots Two and Lot Three. I provided in the staff memo what was previously approved on Block Seven, Lots Two and Three. There were three buildings. Their proposal includes two. So they'll outline what their proposal is and then should they choose to move forward after the concept plan, we'll provide additional information on the differences between what's approved and what their proposal is through an FDP amendment process.
All right. Thank you. Welcome, gentlemen.
Well, thank you, trustees, for taking the time to, to meet with us and hear our, our vision. My name is Ryland Reed. This is Matt Bodenchuk and Mark Shaker. My other partner, Dr. Joseph Sheen couldn't be here tonight, may show up late, but was in a, in a surgery. A little background on myself and Dr. Sheen, we've been a part of Impact Sports since 2007. We were a part of the transition to bring Impact Sports and the sports stable to downtown Superior in 2017. And have been really a champion for the, for downtown Superior and the community ever since. We've seen a lot of growth throughout the years. We've had a lot of trials and tribulations, getting through some challenges that we've had. But in that time, you know, we've, we've seen the community, the apartments, the retail, downtown Superior development. And I've been there the entire time, really, you know, trying to drive, drive traffic and through a youth sports and fitness background. But I stared across from my office at these lots and I saw the, 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 the vision of what downtown Superior was set, you know, maybe 2010, 2009. And I saw it coming to fruition. And I stared at this dirt and my wife at Impact Sports runs a very large summer camp. And we have a after-school program, we have a preschool. So we have a pretty good in-touch feel with the community. And we were missing food. We were missing food and beverage. We were missing something to bring us all together. We had, we had a lot of traffic. We have a lot of sports. We have a lot of people coming from far and wide to, to, to come to Superior. And that's something that we, we felt was missing. So that was about two years ago. And we, along with my partners here, we put together a real estate group and set out to find a way to bring some, some food and beverage to downtown Superior. And in doing so, we were able to, we were able to, through a chance meeting, through a chance encounter, while we were, we were searching for this, this partner and we had this vision, make a contact with, with Mark Shaker. It was, it was a completely different meeting. We were talking about some other concepts and things that we were potentially looking at. And I found out that he was pretty strong in the food hall industry. I didn't know how strong until I did a little research into his background. And I said, hey, Mark, I have an opportunity for you. This was about two years ago. We want to kick the tires on it and take a look at it. And over the last two years, we've, we've been planning and meeting. And Mark has certainly done his due diligence on the, on the site and the project. And I think, I think we've come to the point where we're here today and we're, we're ready to talk about it and get some feedback and really try to, to take some steps forward in bringing some, some, some downtown food and beverage and, and life to, to downtown Superior. So Mark has done some, some really terrific food halls in Colorado. He has done the Golden Mill. Malcolm Yards is a place that's in Minneapolis and the Stanley Marketplace. He's got a couple other projects and concepts that he's working on in the state. And we're really excited to introduce him to the town of Superior and his concepts and his vision for, for what he does in, in community building and bringing good quality food and good ingredients to, to downtown. So I will, I'll turn it over to Mark, let him talk a little bit more about his background and then he can go into a little bit more detail on, on the food hall.
Welcome.
Thank you, Ron. Again, Mark Shaker. I, to go back in time, I'm actually a social worker by training. And so how I look at community development projects like this is through the lens of a social worker. And I try to figure out how do you bring or create an opportunity to bring people together. And so each project that I develop takes about three years or so, because I like to understand exactly what that community is, who the stakeholders are, and does this sort of resonate and make sense. And so I first developed Stanley Marketplace that opened in 2016 on the border of Aurora and Denver. I did the Golden Mill in 2021 and the market at Malcolm Yards right on that same time. And so when I first met Ryland and Matt, it was understanding Superior. And in all honesty, I didn't know Superior well. I live in Central Park area of Denver. So I wanted to understand what's happening here and what are opportunities. And I looked at that and I saw the sports stable and I saw the neighborhoods building all kinds of apartments. And I saw a community that was a young community. And I saw an opportunity to potentially do something that can kind of galvanize people together. And so it, it took a while to really kind of grasp and get an understanding. And I'm, I'm no expert on Superior, but this would be something that could be pretty special. And as we looked at this area and we looked at what we could do there, it made a lot of sense to say, we can do something that's pretty dynamic that will work for all the residents of Superior, that will work for a new hotel that's opening up, that'll work for the bio, or the, the, the office space that's coming around and the sports table. And the way you do that, though, is to create a community gathering spot that really resonates with locals. If you work and you develop something that works with locals, is a place they want to be a part of, everyone, not just in Superior, but surrounding neighborhoods will want to be a part of that. And if you're visiting, whether it's the sports table or if you're working here, that's a place you want to go to. So that was sort of the approach we've taken. And we've really ramped it up. We've been meeting weekly for two years, but we've really ramped it up in the last six months where we feel like we have something that we're comfortable presenting and saying, all right, let's, let's get feedback and let's share sort of what our thoughts are and then we can go from there. And go to the next slide. So this is a high-level Block Seven site plan. So that's just showing it's sort of a, you know, obviously a very high-level overview of exactly where the location is we're talking about. I'll dial in in the next few slides as far as what we think it can look like and go from there. This is an aerial perspective of the overview. So that's on the bottom is our design as of right now. One of the things that's really important to us is making sure our front door is sort of facing the common area. It's also facing a lot of the sort of Carmel developments. We'll have an entryway on the backside, which is close in proximity to the sports table, along with a parking lot adjacent to it. But that's our current design. So a first floor, about 9,000 square foot first floor footprint and about a 5,000 to 6,000 square foot rooftop deck. One of the things I'll point out, because we've talked to Carmel and a lot of other folks around here, is that we're very sensitive. All my projects have good neighbor agreements with all surrounding apartments. So we engage and we have, we have deals with everyone as far as what our lumen levels can be, what our sound decibels will be. So we, we orchestrate all of that into how we sort of design something and create something. So it's not some, this is not going to be a place that has two P, two AM rave parties at it. This is a family-based, community-focused entity, but we're very sensitive to our orientation into how we sort of lay things out. So this is a side net. We know that Superior, that's just a placeholder name place. We know there's a Superior Marketplace. I get that. So apologize for that. But this is just, again, just a little bit of sort of a, what we really sort of focus on with our projects is this family-focused. This is something that anyone can sort of be comfortable with. This is not something that is, you must be worried about as far as noise violations or something that will cause problems with anyone that lives in the neighborhood. This is a high-level sort of design. Again, it's sort of what it looks like. This is, again, this is kind of nerd stuff as far as how we lay things out within the back of the house. We have a design for, it's our footprint for all of our food halls. Everything's front-facing. We designed this to be for food concepts. All front-facing, faced towards the common area. One of the things I do in all my projects is I do a self-pour beverage system that you check in, you get like a Dave and Buster's card. You swipe it, then you move around. You can have three family members there. Everyone goes and gets their own food. Everyone gets a drink or a soda. It all ends up in the same bill. This is, again, nerd stuff, but it's, it's stuff that operationally works really well, particularly for families and those that live in the neighborhood that understand how the system works. So a little bit of the elevation, east-west sort of orientation. Again, we're looking at between 8,000 and 9,000 square feet interior, a little bit of our front-facing patio and the rooftop deck that will have mountain views, which we think will be pretty elegant. This is just the overhead view, which is sort of the same thing. This is a bit of the interior that we've designed. You can get an idea. These are all sort of generic food stall names, but it's a very sort of fluid system. If you've been to my other places, you'll, you'll, you'll see sort of the vibe. But one of the things that we talked to, when we talked to city staff two months ago, and we also met them a month ago, is that we really want the design orientation, interior and exterior, to fit within what's happening in the town of Superior. This is not going to be something that is, you know, a black eye or something that looks different. It's going to fit in. And that's why we really appreciate feedback and thoughts as far as how does this work within the fabric? We're going to have our own sort of things that are unique and dynamic, but it really is meant to be sort of, you know, we think of it almost like as the heartbeat of sort of the town center. There'll be things all around it that have been developed. How do we make sure it fits and orients appropriately and, and works for everyone that, particularly those that live here? This is some other views. You can see sort of the, right here, our front-facing sort of marketplace design towards the, the common area, the interior sort of aesthetic. I like to throw art and stuff, so I'll tell you that right now. All right, let me pass it off to Matt as far as our next door. So this is a, this is a two-component sort of process here. So the food hall, then also a pizza parlor. And Matt could talk more about that.
Thank you, Mark. My name is Matt and I grew up in Boulder, lived here my whole life. So I've seen downtown Superior kind of grow to where it is now. And it's, it's really, really impressive. This pizza parlor is going to be somewhat of an extension of the food hall. The food hall will have four food bays, definitely generated, you know, kind of designed for families, people going to the sports stables. It's very easy to go get different types of cuisine, grab different kinds of drinks. With, with the self-serve pour wall, this will be kind of an extension of that. The pizza parlor will be high-end. The pizza parlor will be high end wood fired pizza. It takes specialty equipment that we don't necessarily want to throw into one of the food bays. We don't want either a tenant to leave or have to, have to build out that infrastructure. It, it takes very specialty equipment. So that will be put in the pizza parlor. It's going to have a slightly different vibe than, than the food hall. It will be full service, higher end cocktails and, and just really good wood fired pizza. You know, we've kind of seen that trend really take off in Colorado especially. And we want to kind of match that vibe of those higher end wood fired pizza places in Boulder and Denver and bring that to downtown Superior. So this right here is, you know, it's a part of Block seven, but this is kind of on the corner of Main Street and Superior Drive here. Sports Stables is over here. And so this will be very complimentary to the food hall, but just to offer a slightly different type of cuisine and a slightly different type of service. So here is kind of an aerial view of, like Mark said, this is kind of the, the nitty gritty, kind of the nerdy stuff where the backend stuff is going to go. You know, we, we definitely want to take advantage of the common space here. And so a lot of this outdoor seating is facing that common area. And then, you know, we'll have a walkway over here in between the two establishments. These are kind of front facing views. We want to really incorporate a lot of outdoor seating. I think, you know, people in Colorado love to go have pizza and, and drinks outside. And, and this concept will allow families to come in, sit down, grab a pizza, grab a drink while their kids are kind of running around in the splash pad, running around in the common area and parents will still have eyes on them. I have three kids myself and this is something that I would love to see in, in Boulder or the surrounding areas. Just another kind of front facing concept. You know, this, this, this is just a placeholder, the Superior Pizza with this, you know, there, it will have a slightly different name. But this is kind of just giving you an idea of what it looks like. To Mark's point, we want to make sure everything is cohesive with the rest of downtown Superior. And it will, you know, it's not going to stick out. It's going to be, it's going to, it's going to complement all the other buildings. Here's an inside view. One of the things that we, you know, wanted to highlight was actually having the visibility of, of the fire there. I think it really creates a really nice ambiance. And when people actually see that fire where the pizza is going into, it creates a really fun and kind of lively environment. So it'll be a fairly small footprint. We're talking, you know, twenty five hundred square feet for the building itself. It's on a three, four, five thousand square foot lot. But the, the interior will be fairly small and, and it's not going to feel cavernous. So it's kind of like we said, it's, it's a bit of an extension of the food hall itself. And we'll have kind of a, a very nice homey feel to it. So again, this is the, here's the splash pad, the, you know, the common area and the, and the amphitheater is kind of over here. Both establishments are, are, are front facing into that common area. I think it's really, really important, like we said. You know, you try to go get a bite to eat in downtown Boulder and there's just not a lot of square footage. There's not a lot of room for the kids to run around. It's, it's, everything is super, super tight. We think this is a, this has a really strategic advantage and we're going to draw a lot of people in from downtown Boulder, a lot of families, a lot of people from Arvada and a lot of people from kind of this, the surrounding areas because this is going to be a really, really unique feature where parents, families can come in and they can have eyes on their kids while they're running around, while they're enjoying, you know, food and drink at, at the pizza parlor. And then this is just kind of some square footage numbers, just kind of showing you roughly the, the size of the, of the, of the, of the actual buildings, size of the lot and kind of the components that are going into each building. So I think that is it. That is, those are all the slides we have. And I think we'd love your, your feedback on anything that you see. You know, we definitely don't want to get too far ahead on this project with, without your input and your feedback. And, and we want to be able to make changes early on in, in the, in the development process so that we're in lockstep and, and we're not wasting a lot of time and money on, on things that are not going to get approved.
All right. Well, thank you for the presentation. We, we appreciate it. Turn it over to anybody who wants to start.
I'll start. Thanks. Thank you so much for the presentation. I'm really excited to see this kind of concept come into downtown. That's one of the reasons why I moved to downtown is to be able to walk to some kind of food hall or restaurant and enjoy tasty beverage and, and, you know, food and watch sunset. So I'm really excited about this concept. I just have kind of a couple logistical questions. You talked about being able to sit on the roof deck and, and watch the sunset. I'm, I'm curious where that building is and how it's oriented in relation to the pitched roof that you have, plus the apartment building that's just west of that. Will there actually be mountain views on the roof deck patio? Or will those be obscured by the development that's already occurred in downtown?
I think we'll see the tops of the mountains.
Tops of them. Okay.
There is a small gap in the buildings right now.
Okay.
Where you can act, I think you will see, you might, you might have some views of the thunder.
Okay. All right.
We really wanted to keep that into consideration. Unfortunately, the, the parking garage elevations and this elevations, it wasn't worth the ad to add the second floor and try to get up. We weren't going to get the Bigsby lot that had the views. But I'd say we're going to try our, our best to do what we can there.
Great. And then I'm, I'm curious about the, the food hall and how the kind of logistics of that. Are those individual franchises that you own and operate? Or do you lease out that space to independent operators? So there could be turnover during some period of time? Or do you, do you sort of control all of that?
Yeah, no. So those are, so I have a chef partner. He's Uzilva, who operates several of my stalls in, at Golden Mill. He likely will be involved in a few of them. So how we, how we, again, this is a little bit nerd stuff, but we build out the space. So one of the things that, the problems that we're solving is like really talented chefs or sous chefs or places, they don't have the capital to have their own sort of restaurant. So what we do from our side is we build out the stalls and, on the development side and pay for them. So a talented chef can come in there and spend a couple thousand dollars and be up and running. And so, but chefs are kind of like surgeons. They're tough. They tell people like it's hard and we're in tight spaces. So it's hard to find chefs that will work really well in a tight environment with like four different places. So they will be independent operators. We reduce the barrier to entry by building out those stalls. So they're not building those out. They're not getting a huge loan. They're not having to raise a ton of money. That's just sort of how the model works. And then we will, we ideally in each community we go to, we find somebody in that community that's like an aspiring sort of sous chef or chef. Says, hey, do you want to have your own stall? And you might not be able to afford your own restaurant, brick and mortar, but you can come in here and run your operation. So that's our intention for this.
That's great. Thank you for that. And then the last question I have is around sustainability. I'm not sure if you're aware, but Superior has a pretty comprehensive and aggressive sustainability action plan. And so I was curious to understand how you're thinking about sustainability and incorporating that into the, the design.
Yeah. So we, we've had two meetings with, with town staff. We've kind of laid out preliminarily sort of what our design is. In all of our places, we're very heavy on composting. We're very heavy on material selection for what we're doing from a build perspective and then how we are operating. So those are core components of us. We have a sustainability, I have an ethos. Again, coming back to my social work sort of background, that's a core component of how we sort of operate these things. So like, and this is really valuable to have input from stakeholders to say, let's go through and understand first of all, what the requirements are. And then also sort of what the value, sort of ethos is of everyone that's involved. And let's make sure we build that together.
Great. Thank you.
Others? Yeah?
Yeah. Thanks. Ryland, first I want to thank you for bringing this forward. You know, content plans are always a little weird because, you know, it, it's hard because sometimes people really get excited or sometimes they get really disappointed. Having watched downtown evolve in fits and starts for 11 years, you know, if you look, if you think about those concept drawings, this really does feel like it meets what people were looking for 11 years ago. So I appreciate you bringing it forward. I don't have a lot of comments on the designs. I think they kind of meet the expectations for what we wanted to see. I do have a question for Mark, kind of on the food hall concept, especially around Stanley Marketplace, because you started that before the pandemic. And some restaurant owners that I've, I've known over time have really struggled post pandemic with a huge uptick in takeout versus eating in, in, in the restaurants. How are the food halls sort of weathering that? Because every time I've been to Stanley Marketplace, it's packed to the gills. And the reason I ask is, you know, for downtown, it's about activation. And everything I heard from the three of you is about wanting people to stay here and eat here, enjoy the, the plaza. What I'm, I'm hoping is not likely to happen is that this doesn't become just, you know, a DoorDash sort of turnover kind of thing. And we're just, you know, we're seeing half the occupation and everybody's struggling to get tips and wages and hours. And it's not the, what we want. But it'd be great to kind of hear how it, it's been working out at Stanley.
Yeah, that's a really good question. First of all, I don't do DoorDash in my places. I don't do DoorDash or any of those food takeout places. They kill restaurants. So I don't do them. Do takeout. And so one, in our original design, we didn't kind of go through it earlier, but we have a takeout window because one of the things we're thinking about, particularly with the apartments and the sports stable, is that people might be tight on time. So I'm not anticipating someone who's, not everyone's going to want to spend two hours there. We think there'll be a lot of groups that want to come and spend two hours there. But sometimes you get a tight sort of window. Even with the office people, that will have a takeout kind of window that works for that. The Golden Mill and Malcolm Yards both opened post pandemic, 2021. And so they have worked successfully in operating in a, in a, in a sit down, takeout sort of format. One of the thing I will, I will say is that in this climate, people are looking for ways to gather. They're looking for opportunities to be together. And so we're trying to create an AI proof business model here. And so it creates a place where people can gather, have fun, but then also offer the opportunity for takeout. Again, we won't do any of those DoorDash or any of those things. But I think it will work. And we spent a lot of time thinking about who are our customers? It's mainly focused on locals that live in Superior, who are community members who are invested in the community. Secondly, it's those that are visiting the sports table or at the hotel or whatever it may be. How do we create an opportunity for them? But my sort of DNA is if you create a really good local gathering spot, people want to be a part of that. They don't want to go to a, you know, a run of the mill kind of franchise place.
No, I appreciate hearing that because I, I tend to agree with you. And it's just been a hard dynamic for a lot of restaurants to overcome post pandemic. But if there's a reason to go, people will go. And if their neighbors are going to be there, they're that much more likely to want to go. So appreciate it. I love everything about this. It's hard to find anything that I don't like. So yeah, I'm looking forward to, to seeing it come forward.
Hi. Thank, thank you. This is fantastic. As a parent of a kid who maybe overuses impact services, I can't say enough good things about the program and what Danielle does there. The thought of picking her up at the end of the day there and just rolling out the door over to this space is like heaven. I mean, it is, like, I can see the vision and even just having the farmer's markets coming. I'm already like, okay, Wednesday night, we don't need to do dinner. We will eat there. And, and the amount of kids that come in and out of that place after, I mean, it's a traffic jam over there. And so I just, this is wonderful. And I think it really does fit the desire for people in this community to want to gather in spaces that are made for that and make it easy for them. And the fact that kids can, I, I can just imagine the kids with the shared ticket just running around, maybe overspending. Good for you, but bad for our parents' pockets. But it, just the joyfulness of being with people in the community in a place that's right here. And we don't, and, and the biking there. And, and I feel like my microphone keeps going off. Yeah, this is fantastic. The, the only question I had about one of the visuals was the backside of the pizza place. It's such a, like, when you go into the sports table and you come around and I would hate for there to be something that like makes you feel like you're behind something. And so just the consideration for the aesthetics to soften that corner, that it's not just like the backside of a building. Just keeping that kind of open, it may be impossible, but that was the only thing that I saw. Like, I don't know if I like that. Fixable with trees and things like that. So.
Yeah, the challenge is going to be, you know, we're a little bit landlocked. There's not really a back or a front. We're kind of, you know, trying to be all sides to everybody. But I think the, the important part is we flow between the food hall and the, and the pizza parlor. It complements all the activities and the infrastructure that's already built.
Yeah.
To your point, I think if we do it right, that the people and the gathering and the fun will start and the rest will kind of take care of itself.
I, I do have one question. When the weather changes and the usability of the space, it's now on my to do list to go to the Golden Mill. I have not been there to just check it out and see what that feels like. But when the, when the winter comes and it gets more, you know, people aren't really hanging out outside. Like, what is the kind of plan for how to host people that want to still be there without that kind of open feeling that's going on?
Yeah, that's a good question. I do encourage you to go to Golden Mill. The, so the Golden Mill though, at, on our rooftop, we have gas powered, like, like heating tables. So it's, it, we're creating outdoor experience. One of the things that's important about the orientation of this design is it's south and west facing. So you're getting that direct sun. And so even on, unless in January and February, not going to be as busy as the summer. So we understand that, that you get, you get a haircut on that. But if you can create places where it still feels, and Coloradans are, are pretty hardy, where there's a warm little table with a fire in there and you can roast marshmallows, it still works. And we do a lot of holiday parties, December, January, February. So that helps as well. And that, one of the last thing I'll say is that part of our design, which I didn't go into on the interior, is really creating a good space. I have found that there's a big demand for between, groups between thirty and fifty, whether they're office groups or sports groups. And so our orientation is going to lay it out really well. So that's a spot that can be reserved for a large group. And that really particularly helps during the winter months.
Yeah, gentlemen, fantastic presentation. And the greatest thing I love about it, it's concise, it's brief. A lot of times people come up with fifty slides. It goes on and on and on. We kind of lose the thread. So this is, this is brilliant as far as getting to know exactly what you guys are looking for. Just a couple of questions. The first, I would love to get you guys in touch with our Spirit Chamber of Commerce. Renee Elenas is in charge of it. I think that would be a really good vehicle to help you guys move forward to, to kind of market your brand within the town and get people really excited about this because this concept is exactly, you know, to Mike's point, it's what we've been looking for. I moved to downtown as one of the first residents in 2017 because of things like this. And I really do believe it's one of these, if you build it, they will come. And I think this will be a huge success. Construction takes a while and you guys are kind of still in the developmental phase of this. You know, we just landed, well, Boulder landed Sundance in 2027. Is there any opportunity that this could be open before January 27? Or is this be looking at maybe the second year of Sundance? Oh, that's a legitimate question. I mean, no pressure. I mean, we, we do want this to move forward.
No, no.
Yeah, yeah.
I appreciate that. We're excited about that. That's on our radar as well. Yes. So we have an FTP amendment that we need to go through. We're pretty far in our design. And so one of the things that, and Matt alluded to it, is that we want to make sure we get every, you know, stakeholders' feedback to make sure, okay, if we're good on this, then we're going to keep going. So we're, you know, we're not, we're at like SD level before we go into CD level. Capital procurement will not be an issue. And so then we'll be gone. I think this is a nine month construction period. So the objective is to get done by, to be dirt moving by the end of the year.
Fantastic. Excited. And lastly, you know, Neil touched about the, the type of businesses that you're going to have in there. What are, is this pretty much hard lined? Are, are there some things that could be fluctuated? I mean, the pizza one, I don't want that to change at all. I want that to stay very, very badly. My concern is that having a beer hall so close to an established microbrewery that we have in, in Bambi issue, and they were one of the first places to really invest in this area and, and, you know, and open up a shop and take a chance on us. I just want to make sure that, you know, their business model is going to be safe going forward and we're not going to be opening up competing businesses because a lot of their target audience is downtown. A lot of people like to walk to Bambi's and have a drink and walk back. So is there an opportunity for the beer hall to not necessarily be a beer hall, but more likely just be a place where you can grab a beer with your food? Or is that, is that something?
Yeah. And that, that label was a little bit misleading. So it really is just, it's a food hall. And so, I mean, to give you an example at Stanley Marketplace, within Stanley Marketplace, I, I own a place called the Stanley Beer Hall. And our next I own a place called the Stanley Beer Hall. And our next door neighbor there is Chaluna Brewery. And so with Chaluna Brewery, we have a deal where they always have three handles on our self, we do a self pour wall where we're always providing their stuff. So one of the first conversations we'll have as we're moving with Bambi is like, can we have your beers on tap here? So that we are, and so the other big thing is we are not interested in cannibalizing anybody. So it'll be a full survey of the food concepts that are close by to make sure our chefs can do all kinds of different things. So we're not doing anything, we're not going to do anything that's right across the street. There's no intention of that. There's no, no desire for any of that stuff. And so the other thing I will, I will add is that with some of our, I'll go back to Stanley Marketplace. But our theory was there was that the more good concepts you have, the larger radius people will travel to come there.
Sure.
And so that's what we believe in. And so we will be very conscious of what Bambi does and everyone else that's around there, work with them, find opportunities for them to be part of it. But it's really, it really isn't a beer hall. It's a, it's a food hall with four stalls that has a, and our self pour wall is beer, cocktails, wine. It's not just beer.
Okay.
And we'll have Bambi on top and anyone else around here. But we will be engaging with everyone saying, let's create a district so that people from all the surrounding neighborhoods want to come here. And you go to one spot and you walk around.
Okay, that sounds fantastic. Thank you.
All right, I'll close it out. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here tonight and presenting to us. Stephanie Miller and Heather Craycraft, two of our other council members, they're on safari right now. So they're unable to join us, but they did send some feedback. Stephanie said that she really loves the design of the food hall in the presentation with the rooftop patio, seating overlooking the plaza. She thinks that it'd be a great addition to drive people to downtown Superior. And Heather said that she also thinks that the design concept for the food hall is something we've been waiting for since we put shovel in the ground over a decade ago. So she's looking forward to a concept like this as well. So there's additional support here on the dais from them. I'm a huge fan of the Stanley Marketplace. I used to live down in Park Hill and loved Stanley Marketplace. And I was floating down Clear Creek in a tube last summer. Didn't know about the Golden, the Golden Mill. But as I floated by, I was like, look at that really cool place with all those people on the rooftop deck having a blast. What is that place? It was the Golden Mill. So, you know, your concepts obviously speak for themselves. People love them. They are, they're just kind of senses of community. People want to be there. And so I think that this is, this is perfect for Superior. I couldn't be more supportive of bringing a concept like this to downtown. I think we've got the population density. I've got, we've got the, the desire in the community for these types of concepts. I will say that as, as a parent of picky eaters, that everybody can't decide on what they want. We love food halls, you know, because somebody's going to get sushi, somebody's going to get tacos, somebody's going to get pizza. I think you will have people who are at the food hall who want pizza. So you'll have one member of the family going and getting a pizza to go and then bringing it back to the food hall. So designing this project to facilitate that as, as easy as possible, I think would be smart to do. And that's totally a self indulgent request because I know that my son will only want pizza. Yeah, exactly. Yeah, exactly. The, I think that you're going to benefit from, from the Sundance Film Festival for sure. And especially when the hotel gets back up and running, and there's just going to be additional people down. And then obviously as the office users come in, as the people move into block eight with the, you know, 250 new units that are coming online, that also be, you know, customers for your, for your project. I think Jen raised a really good suggestion, just thought about just the architectural design, just being mindful of the frontage along, you know, facing the sports table. So, and I recognize the challenges of the lot, but obviously there's a whole aesthetic to downtown and design standards in the development plans, which you're familiar with. So we want to just make sure that everything looks and feels cohesive and, you know, up to date. And, you know, as, as it currently looks, right? But all the mockups and the concept plan here tonight look phenomenal. So really excited for you. And thank you again for taking the time to consider Superior and let us know what we can do to work with you.
Mark, I had one more question or comment. And this was an email that we got from a resident earlier today. And they noted that Superior Marketplace is already a destination. And so if we could maybe look at a different name for this location, that would be great. Thank you.
I think both, both names in the, in the presentation are placeholders. We've kicked around a few, but haven't settled on one yet. But yeah, we're excited. We share your sentiment and enthusiasm, confirmation from what we've been speculating. So we're, we're really excited to get this project moving and bring that final piece to downtown Superior.
Yeah. And obviously we're going to be coming online soon with our community space, you know, right across from the plaza there. And, you know, there's increasing levels of interest of, you know, activating that plaza and really making it a hub. So the ability for us to work as a cohesive community destination, I think is there and will only continue to grow. So thrilled, thrilled that you guys are here and looking forward to seeing the FTP in the, in the future.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, we are done with our presentation section. We're on to item five, which is our project update sections. And we have an update on our pool improvements, on the public engagement and our cost estimates for the pool projects.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. Jordan Hayes, project manager for Parks and Rec. We are here tonight with our representatives from Barker Rinker Sea Cat, Mary and Jason. They're going to do an update for you all on the public engagement piece, as well as some cost estimates for, for North Pool specifically. So, and then hopefully we'll have a nice, long discussion after that and get some priorities and go from there. So here they are.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Appreciate you having us here tonight. Thank you. So we'll just jump right into it here. So we'll start with the kind of the community input results. I'll let Mary kind of run with this portion of it to give you the results of what we had with the aquatic user group focus, the public open house, as well as the online survey.
Hi, everyone. We know you all already kind of received a packet that had a little bit more inclusive results with the full online survey results. So we're just going to kind of touch on those on a high level and show you kind of the overall comparison of them together. So for results, this involves our focus group meeting that we had with representatives from both the Flyers and Elevation Athletics. The public open house we held on April 16th and the online survey. So as a part of this, what we did as an activity at the public open house and with the focus group was what we call our ACE boards, stands for Activity Capacity and Experience. But essentially, we kind of represent the options with these images. And there's also kind of a title on each image here, but it's kind of allowed us to show the users and the public what all the options really are that we'd be considering to get their input. So these are the boards that we had at the public open house and the focus group meeting. And they were able to vote on it with a sticker, a dot during, throughout the night. So that was kind of our main public engagement that we did with both groups to get their input. As you see, it involved both aquatic activities as well as amenities, things like in the building and the facility itself. So for top level, high level results from the swim team and elevation groups. Overall, we went through a lot with them with those activities where they voted. We also talked about hopes and dreams and fears and concerns. So these were the takeaways from those two groups about their hopes and dreams overall for the North Pool here. So number one being either an extended swim season, whether that's three season or a year round. Some sort of heated indoor space, whether it's the whole building or just part of the building, that would be great for the swim team to use when they want to have a small instruction or activity. And they don't, sometimes in the early season, in the early morning, can still be chilly. So a place where they don't have to be cold, they can be inside in a heated space. Increased lighting on the pool deck. This applies to the pool surface as well. And that's related as well to the extended pool season. A larger prep kitchen area for swim meet concessions, interest in aquatic fitness classes. They thought those would be pretty popular. With an extended suite, extended season, that means their swim lessons could also be year round. So that would be a benefit to those groups. Something like outdoor lockies or a cubby system for the participants in the swim team to put away their, their gear and their towels while they're swimming. The automatic pool cover system, which we had mentioned last time, but just kind of to ease the, the manual labor that goes into covering the pool. On deck showers, more bike racks and a pulley training system. As well as their fears and concerns about this particular renovation project, the depth of the water, like making sure that's not hugely impacted by this renovation, so that it still meets their needs for swim meets and lessons. The schedule, of course, to make sure that the pool opens prior to the next, the start of the next season. And making the pool smaller at all, they would be very much not a fan of that. And not wanting to lose the shallow end, so making sure that the pool isn't too deep. Shallow end is really great for the little kids and the swim lessons. And then losing the bench they use for lessons. And when we had a discussion about potentially swim lessons being only at the South Pool, that was a big concern. And I was like, no, we think, really think residents would appreciate having those available at both pools. Next, we have the public open house results here. So here's some photos of the event we had on the 16th. We had a really great turnout. We had some very enthusiastic residents and it was really exciting for us to kind of see that engagement. So as you can see here, we used the space to put up our activity boards and get their votes. We also had boards for their hopes and dreams and fears and concerns for both pools, where they could write on a sticky note and put it on the board. We also had these comment cards, front and back, which allowed for them to give us even more comments about additional thoughts they had or what they thought the project goals should be for this renovation. So as a result of that meeting, these were the votes on those ACE activity boards. So we have put these on the left hand side with the most votes. At 15, we had the splash pad and then a slide with a run out, which is the slide where the, it doesn't end in the pool. It ends on the deck itself. It helps save space in the pool. Lap swimming, aquatic fitness classes, a zero depth entry, swim meets as a priority, an obstacle course. All of those items got 10 or more votes.
Can I stop you for a second? So this, these questions, is this for the North Pool specifically or for both pools?
For both pools. This was not specific to either pool, these results. So this is just in general, kind of the amenities and stuff they'd like to see at either pool.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, of course. So you can see, we included everything here just to give you the full results of that meeting. These are all of the comments we received about hopes and dreams. And what we've done is just tried to start color coding some of them, where you can see repetitive comments and things we were seeing over and over, such as like in the blue text, you'd see that was anytime someone mentioned the year round swimming, that they're in favor of it as their hopes and dreams for specifically for the North Pool here. Things like more shade, things like updated locker rooms and restrooms, comments on extended hours, like can we open earlier in the morning for lap swimming? And same with fears and concerns here. This is again, these are all the comments we received. You know, there's concerns here about swim teams getting priority in the pool, being closed off to the public as well as during swim lessons, not enough, not enough bike parking, losing the beautiful tree cover on the deck. That was kind of a popular comment we got throughout public engagement. Making it too kid focused, another very popular comment we've received throughout the entire engagement, which we will get to, kind of a summary of it all at the end. And now for the South Pool, we have the same thing with hopes and dreams and fears and concerns. So this one, we see a lot more comment about slides and splash pad. Lots of votes here to add slides and those fun amenities at this pool. Comments about the water being too cold. It's like a temperature issue through the summer. Everyone asking if the water could be a little warmer. And generally just kind of continuing that the South Pool is very family friendly, very child friendly. And fears or concerns here for the South Pool, really, you know, getting rid of any child friendly options would be, be a concern here. The frequent closures, the water's too cold, again, comments here. And anything that would restrict children's access to this pool. And we also know, as I mentioned before, you all have the full survey results. So we weren't going to go through every single kind of graph and result of that survey. But one we want to just touch on here, since this is something we'll be talking about tonight, is the question of whether you or your household would be interested in using the North Pool outside of the summer, either spring or fall, if it were properly heated. That 353 respondents did say yes to that and 276 said a maybe. And we had 52 who said no and about 21 who just said unsure to that question. As well as question 15 on the survey, would you be willing to pay a fee to use the North Pool during an extended season? 378 saying yes, whether that was a daily entrance fee or some sort of seasonal pass. To 281 saying no and 85 unsure. So just as a result from that, we wanted to highlight as it kind of relates to discussions we'll have tonight with the cost of doing so.
Do we have any data on other communities in the surrounding area as to what their season looks like? Do any, you know, other front range communities have year round or extended season outdoor pools without a bubble or?
We have to dig a little bit more into that. Not that I can think of offhand. That's open year round, then that's open to this, open to the air.
Yeah.
The Elks and Boulders open year round?
That's the only outdoor pool that's open year round in the area.
Okay. It would be interesting to know what their usage is, if they're willing to share it.
Yeah, we can look into that. We also know that is a pool that Elevation Athletics uses as well in the winter. So we can ask them for their data as well. So overall, this is kind of combined results when we look at the comment cards, the comment section on the public survey, which had about over 250 extra responses beyond the survey, where people could write in their own, their own items. We've tallied those up. So this is sort of in conjunction with the activities that were in the online survey. So with the most mentions on the left of this graph would be the year round or extended season at the North Pool. That was kind of the item we saw the most support for, most often. After that, it's keeping the North Pool adult friendly and the South Pool kid friendly. There was a strong support for that in terms of making sure the North Pool doesn't get too sort of loud and chaotic with a lot of amenities geared toward children, because there are a lot of people who enjoy that it is very dedicated for lap swimming and has more of a relaxed atmosphere at that pool. The next was a hot tub. And after that, the warmer water temperature is at both pools. Aquatic fitness classes, more shaded areas. We had a lot of comments for more shade on the deck would be wonderful. Dedicated lap swimming available to the public at all times. So even if there's lessons or something going on, if there's a way to keep some lap swimming available to everyone. And a splash pad and then upgraded restrooms. And then you'll see we have now more kid friendly activities at North. So there were about half as many votes for that as keeping North more adult friendly. So something we're just trying, you know, something it's when we're looking at the amenities, trying to balance those two demands, right? We have only put on this, those that got five or more votes. So of course there was a long list of other items that had one or two mentions. But for the sake of condensing it and making it easy to look at what people have really prioritized, it's everything with five or more votes here. And then just to keep going through those that are higher, it's the And then just to keep going through those that are higher, it's the slide with a run out and diving boards. And then extended swimming hours, as I mentioned already, like earlier in the morning. So kind of taking all of that into account, this is our list of priorities that was based off of just the engagement itself, not the necessary priorities we're continuing with, but those that came out of the engagement phase. For the north pool, the year round swimming or extended season, early morning hours, hot tub, more kid friendly features, butter lockers, restrooms, shower areas, more shade. The lap swimming and swim meets still being able to meet all of their needs and aquatic fitness classes. And the same just for the south pool. Overall, we saw the most support for the splash pad and the new water slide, warmer water temperatures, keeping this very kid friendly, having spaces that support pool parties and birthdays, updated restrooms and shower areas and more shade at this pool as well. Are there any kind of questions on this engagement side? We're going to jump into our program. We have some concept plans and budgets to discuss as well.
I have a question. As far as, is there any connection or correlation between, like the people asking for earlier hours for lap times are also the ones saying, make it adult friendly? Like is there, are there solutions there that meet those needs without removing the kid piece of the, maybe that's something we can explore later, but there seems to be an ask for earlier use, those are going to be by the adults. And so will that meet the need of the people wanting it to be more adult focused or is that just all day?
It's a great question. It wasn't really necessarily specified of like, that would, that would suffice if it's just early morning time. I think overall though, it's not to say that the adults are only using it in the morning. And so I think overall, the picture we got of the north pool is that it has overall like a calm and relaxing atmosphere. It's got nice shade trees and everyone sort of enjoys that. So what we can talk about and what we're exploring is there are some amenities for sure to add that will be more kid friendly, but maybe they're not permanent. Maybe there, it's not something like a big water slide, but there's certainly things that we can do to add some amenities to this pool without changing that atmosphere overall.
And the Flyers currently reserve the pool for practice from 6:00 AM until 11:00 AM every day during the week. And then depending on whether or not there's a meet on Saturday or not, right? So, you know, early morning access is not available right now because the entire pool is filled with children.
Okay, great. So we'll dive into some program elements now. A couple of concepts we're looking at, we're looking at basically two concepts here. One is, the first is site plan is, you know, we're looking at the bathhouse is kind of down here in this purple area where the locker rooms, the amenities and features are, the waiting pool is over here in the west hand side of that. And then we've got the main lap pool here. And you can kind of see the idea of potentially expanding the pool deck, is what some people have asked for, and then also providing some shade structures out there. These ones we're currently showing four 200 square foot shade structures, but we could certainly go smaller and more in there, even one big large one too. So that's some concepts that we're getting some pricing on. And then the thought of, you know, if we do, depending on what we do with the pool and the waiting pool, there is a need to increase the mechanical room for the pool equipment. It's very small and everything's on top of each other. It's not the easiest and safest to work in. So the thought is to possibly bring in a new pool mechanical building down here, kind of over in the picnic area, that's around 1,200 square feet, thousand or 1,200 square feet. So there's that concept there. And then what that allows to do is allow us to take that existing pool mechanical space inside the building, kind of in this top right corner, to repurpose that space and use it for other things that are needed, say for stores, for instance, storage. So kind of the thought there was be with taking that plan would be to take, you know, this existing pool mechanical, turn that into a lifeguard break room so they're not on the pool deck, make that a lifeguard office as well, so they have some space to work and they can have some classes. And then put a single user restroom kind of off on the right hand side here that, you know, could be used potentially during the off season by the tennis players over there. And then taking this bottom right hand corner here and making that the men's and women's restrooms, the lobby and the entry and the reception and the welcome desk would still all be in the same location for the most part, but we span it a little bit more to give them a little bit more room to work behind that desk. And then think about adding, kind of in the bottom left hand side here, adding a classroom slash party room, some sort of space that you could rent out possibly or have classes, swimmy could use it, or you could rent it out even for a party for the most part. And then putting on, in the, under that covered outdoor patio area, putting in a couple of family changing rooms that would have a toilet, a sink and a shower and a bench. So if the mom's in there with, you know, mom brings her two boys in, they get a place to go and change, shower up and everything else. And we're still having, looking at having a couple of showers on the pool deck as well. So that's one option. The other option is looking at keeping, you know, the pool mechanical space where it is, but taking over the rest of that whole wing so that we can really expand that portion of it and get them more room in there for all that pool equipment. Put the single user restroom down the bottom right hand corner and then that can still be accessed from the, or accessed by the tennis court players. Makes it a little bit easier because then they're outside the pool enclosure, so we don't have any problems there. They're completely separated from it. The entry and lobby and reception area, the welcome desk would remain about the same as what we had in the previous design. And then putting the restrooms over here in this corner of the building and then taking the covered area and enclosing most of that for a classroom, party room and then lifeguard spaces, and then again, a couple of family changing rooms. You know, right now we're looking at about a million dollars, just over a million dollars is what we're coming up with to do that portion of work with the building, the renovation and the addition. And then I'm going to move into.
Can you back up just a bit? One of the comments that we had consistently was, you know, make the bathrooms bigger and better. What I'm seeing in both of these is they're actually getting smaller. Is that a fair representation? Because I mean, what you're basically, whether it's concept A or B, what was the entire women's room area is now both the women's and the men's or vice versa?
There's, yes, you're good catch there. There's a lot of inefficient and wasted space in the current life.
That's for sure, yes.
So we are looking at doubling down on some of those spaces to really make the most efficient and useful as possible.
Okay.
And then question, sorry, redone?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
For the two options that you just presented, the dollar amounts that you have highlighted there, is that the same dollar amount for both option A and B or is these dollar amounts just for this design option?
These dollar amounts would be for this design option and the other one would be about $600,000 more.
Okay.
It would be this option here, which we.
1.7 ish?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So then.
Can we just hold off for a second? So right now, looking at the, this thing doesn't work. So both of these concepts include expanding the, the building. Do you have a pointer there? Thanks. So right now, the building currently ends right here.
Correct.
Right? And so this is a patio that's covered.
Yes.
Right? So in this, in this mockup, there's these two family rooms that are family changing rooms that are being added. And then the other mockup, there's the, this party room concept. So one of the, one of the comments that we got from the Flyers swim team is, so going back to the, the mockup without, as close to kind of the current, current places. So when they have their swim meets, you know, they basically set up like this whole area is their concessions area that they use it. They've got grills set up there, they've got tables there. And, you know, then people have to, you know, come here and access the restrooms and whatnot. But, you know, this is, you know, a big aspect of their meets, right? So one of the comments that we got here from the Flyers was, you know, the Flyers sell food at each meet, we use a large grill and our concessions are set up underneath the building overhang. We access the kitchen as well, having access to the kitchen and a shaded place to sell food is important. So, you know, that's a big aspect of it. You've got lots of families there, they're looking for food. You've got swimmers who are hungry, they're looking for food. So having, you know, access to someplace where not only could they, to sell and to prepare the food, but to actually, you know, serve it. So other places have, you know, kitchen areas with, you know, vending windows that are included in the building. So, you know, you can do the vending, you go through the window and you buy your hamburger or whatever you're doing. So I want us to just be mindful of that because, you know, if we're going to be expanding this at all and taking away from the covered patio area, that will, that'll be a change and it'll impact what people are used to. And we want to just make sure that we've got, hopefully everybody's buy in on what we're looking to do.
And as I understand the design concept, one of those was expanding the pool deck with four 200 square foot shaded areas. So could those be the areas where the food vending gets moved to?
Yeah, I mean, you know, anything's possible. But just like looking at the, at the general.
It's going to be the change.
Let's go back to that general map that you just had there, yeah, that one. And so right now you've got the building right here. So the way they, they structure, you know, they, they store things, we've got some storage over on the east side of the pool deck, you know, so there's grills in there and they, they bring the grills out, they set them up over here. So, you know, and they, they take up this entire space. And then there's swimmers and tents and just chaos throughout, you know, there's not an inch of space to spare. If you've, I encourage you this summer, like before we, we award any contracts on this to just go on a Saturday when there's a home Flyer meet and just, just get a feel for what, what's going on there from 7:00 AM until 1:00 PM on a Saturday home meet. But you'll, you'll get an idea for kind of what space is being utilized. Like they've got tents set up over here for shade for the swimmers. All the parents are set up over here to watch the swimmers. You've got timers and judges and all the swimmers are taking off over here and swimming back and forth. You've got all the judges and the scoring. And that's another comment that we got over from the Flyers was that, you know, they, they need internet access and, and power because they are running the clocks and everything to time all the swimmers and, and judge them. So just want us to make, make sure that we're not making an improvement that's going to make things less comfortable.
One thought is with this, with this option here, with this classroom and party room kind of off the side, that they could possibly use this. We could have some cabinets in here, we could have a couple sinks and they could serve food and do their swim meets and the team management stuff in here and maybe even serve some food possibly too. So that was one thought with this idea of this concept. The other one with this one here is, yeah, we are cutting a lot of it out of it, but we're wondering if they can still make some use out of the space. So, but valid, valid comment for sure, something to consider. Anything else on those?
Yeah, just my only comment on B. I, I get the need for a classroom or a party room, but those don't get used on a regular basis and it just seems like a lot of wasted space. You know, I mean, it'll get used, it'll take three days out of four, but then it's just a lot of just unused space versus concept A, it looked like it's a different orientation, but it's a smaller space that, you know, and if it's got a garage door, then people can use it, you know, on swim meet days or something.
I do think that the existing, like separate and apart from just how the swim team uses it, the overall design and, and kind of flow of, I don't know what the women's room is like, but the men's room is, it's weird. It's really poorly designed, so there's some, some opportunities. And also just the flow into it from, from this back side is just, is weird. And seems like there's a lot of wasted space in there. And just opportunities to just make it feel bigger even by making it smaller.
Yeah, make it more efficient for sure. Okay. You have other thoughts or ideas?
And I really like the concept of the restroom accessible year round for the tennis and other facilities. Yeah, there is. Single, I think that's a great addition and it's going to get used.
And there was also a comment made, I think during First Fridays about this concept or maybe we got an email about it, but, you know, the idea of having a single user bathroom that's available year round versus having the men's and women's bathrooms available year round is smart because then the possibility of like vandalism happening in, in a large bathroom and, you know, a lot of, lot of costs associated with fixing something that goes wrong in a, in a large bathroom is going to save us a lot of money versus just keeping a single user. And it would be sufficient to meet demand as well.
And it beats the honey bucket that's out there right now.
So you can, you can winterize the, the large areas while keeping a single user open.
Yeah, so you're not operating the whole building all year long, just that one space or heating that space for sure. The other nice thing is it keeps the people that are off, you know, off season, keeps them from going in the pool enclosure.
I have a question because now the, so if the classroom in this example, if those are built out, right now that's open, so the line of sight just from the pool and the lifeguard is to the kiddie pool, it's like you can see everything, it's very open. So when these structures, if, like how do they impede like vision of this smaller pool area from where the lifeguards are and where, you know, people will be?
Yeah, it does impede on that and it would be something we could easily switch these two spaces so the lifeguards could get views of the lap pool and the waiting pool. These are real just diagrammatic quick ones just to study and see how things are laying out and get some pricing put together. But yeah, that's a good comment too, we could easily switch that and they could get good views out. So we're kind of torn there. Do you have a garage door for the classroom that the swim team might use or do you put the lifeguards out in that space?
I mean, the right answer is the safety answer, but. Like having there be a, the garage door or some sort of like opening on the side, maybe it could be on the other side?
This side?
I don't know. I don't know.
Something to look into?
Yes.
We'll study that.
You could, you could have this be a family changing room and have that be the lifeguard station, right?
I didn't just mean, I don't, I mean where they actually sit to look at the pool, like out on the chair, like not in their like office and break room area. I'm talking about the actual like lifeguards out that are on duty watching in the pool because where they are in the middle of the pool to see the whole pool, they can see the kiddie pool. And when these buildings are there, I don't know that they'll be able to see everything that's happening where there's water behind them. So just something that they may have to adjust.
I see.
Where they are or.
Where they're standing, where the lifeguard.
Yeah, I'm sure there's a solution. I just was aware that that would probably be an issue.
Good point.
I'll just throw out a couple, just for your, your information, a couple of the other points that we received from the swim team. So, so they said in their, in their email that they sent to us today, you know, obviously they, we currently have a 25 meter pool, so they, they need it to be regulation length, so either 25 meters or 25 yards. So we're not looking to change the, the scope of the, the size of the pool, keep it at 25 meters. They say they, they use all available space inside the fence to run their meets. Tents are set up on both sides towards the deep end for shade for coaches for each team. Our home meets this year are on June 7th, June 24th, June 28th, July 19th, if anybody wants to stop by and kind of see the chaos. Shade at both ends of the pool lanes would be great. They set up a lot of tents to keep kids in the shade while they wait for their events. I already went through the selling of food, that they use a large grill and their concessions are set up underneath the building overhang and they like having access to the kitchen as well. Having a shaded place to sell the food is important to them. The power needs, the extension cords, internet cords from inside the building running to the southwest side of the pool where they set up the timing system. Having a better way to access the electricity and internet would be nice. They said the women's restroom currently is poorly designed. They end up leaning over the toilets just to be able to close the stall doors, they're just too small. Meanwhile, there's a huge amount of empty space in front of the sinks. They would like to keep their shed at the deep end of the pool since that's where they start, store all the starting blocks, which are really heavy to move. And then ideally, if we can move to the, the pool schematic that shows the hole, yeah. They would love to have a swingable gate right on the west side of the pool. Cause right now, the, the lawn up on this hill, everybody sets up, sets up tents. And then when they have to go watch their kids swim, they walk down the sidewalk, walk through the gate and then, you know, come in over here. If they could actually just walk in through a swingable gate here, that would prevent them from having to, because we've got a bottleneck right here.
Sure.
And then no access on this side. So having an access point over on this west side would be optimal.
We can take a look at that, be a little challenged with that drainage channel right there in the grades, but we see what we can do than having a sidewalk to, we'll have to look and study that a little bit. Okay. And anything else on that, the building or anything? Just going to go through some of the amenities, get the guys excited. So a few things that we're looking at doing in terms of, you know, we guys asked the question a little bit ago, but what else can we do to this to make it more fun and entertaining and things, but yet not lose the lap lanes? You know, some amenities we're thinking about is these, these relaxing, these jets that can provide some massage on the backs and things of that nature. We're also thinking about. We're also thinking about, you know, removal basketball goals, removal volleyball nets and goals that people can do. So when they're not doing lap swimming, they can still have some fun and the kids can play and stuff like that. So some of those components could be incorporated into it. Mary mentioned fitness, different types of fitness, yoga, strength training, water aerobics of some sort possibly be all the, all the types of activities we could do in those spaces in that pool as well. Climbing walls, you know, climbing wall could be kind of fun. Wouldn't necessarily impede. We'd have to watch where you put that. Definitely we don't want that on the starting block side for sure, but you know, climbing ones are an option or some sort of jungle gym, something that you can, you know, hang across and come, come across here. And that's kind of a fun thing to do. And then the idea of the splash pad, we think we mentioned splash pad possibly last time, but maybe replacing that waiting pool with some sort of splash pad. It could be part of the pool and the enclosure or it could be completely separated or completely, completely open so that people don't even have to come in the pool to use that either. So there's a thought there with that option. And then we've talked a lot about shades. So there's shade structures come in a lot of different sizes and shapes and styles. You know, the smaller ones are more, a little bit more intimate, the more, the bigger ones that you just allow more people to sit around, or maybe it's even one that's just maybe focused primarily for, you know, concessions where people can go and eat and sit and, and drink and eat their food and things like that too. So there's a few options of that and some things we're considering. And then also other site amenities, games, you know, we find that just, you know, maybe people aren't here, don't want to spend all day here just watching swimming, but maybe they want to play some games. So you could do, there's some site areas and some things we could do some fun games with as well. And the building amenities, we want to definitely make it more welcoming and inviting when you come into the building, a, a more efficient flow of check-in and circulation and people's coming into the facility. Think about maybe some sort of multipurpose enclosed room. As mentioned, you could do classes, party rooms, training. The swim teams could possibly use it for team management aspects. And then really dialing up and improving the amenities in the locker rooms. You know, vanity sinks, toilets, all those kinds of things and make them all ADA compliant and, uh, uh, energy efficient to sustainable. In terms of project budget, we've mentioned a few things here. I think you guys have already seen this, but you know, we started adding up what it's going to take to replace the pool equipment and up, and fix up the pool and things. And that's coming around about just over $2 million. And that does not include, we did look at the cost of adding potentially two swim lanes for a total of 12. We did hear that request. And that's about a $600,000 to $700,000 add in addition to 2 million. So right now the 2 million covers the things that have the box around them. You know, replacing the skimmers with primer gutter, replay, redoing the shell of the pool, replace the main grate, main drain grates, replacing all the underwater lights for LED lights and get them operational. Potentially converting the existing water, a waiting pool to a splash pad. We did figure that one in there just to see what that would come in at the cost. We've got, install water meters in the fill lines. We can monitor the water. That's a small price there. What are the other bigger ticket ones? Provide additional chemical storage rooms that right now is lacking over there. Everything's in one room, which is kind of not the best way to do it. And then considering electric heaters for pools, you know, we're also still looking at that and the pool heat and the pool covers as well, powered pool covers. So those are the items and the $2 million for the pool systems portion. In terms of the site costs, we're looking at doing, you know, extending the, possibly extend the, the pool deck by about 2,000 square feet. That's an option. Look at adding a couple of pool monitor shower, uh, shower poles in the deck, couple of those for some additional showers. Again, we mentioned the pool deck lights for the water surface and around the deck, provide more shade canopies. Then we did throw in a couple, two EV charging stations. We got to redo a couple of the parking, accessible parking stalls. They don't quite meet ADA slopes. They're a little bit too steep for that, so we redo those. We've got a number in here to seal coat the parking lot and stripe it as well, just to preserve the length and the, preserve that many you guys already have there. Bike racks is a big request.
Do we know how many EV stations we have around town?
We have five that are town road.
And then how about beyond that?
There's about, there's another about 20 we have, we are highly.
I thought at one point we had this discussion up here that we, we had like more EV stations per capita than like any.
It's one of the highest in Denver metro because between Tesla's got theirs and then the Charge America, BVSD, and that's where I'd sent this note to Jordan because if you walk a half block, BVSD's got its own charging station. It's the same charge point, right? Like, I'm not sure we need this one. It's kind of redundant.
I, I don't think that's consistent with what the voters authorize with the sales tax.
Agreed.
Personally. So we'd like to focus on getting more bang for our buck with pool upgrades rather than charging people's cars.
Yep.
Okay.
But I, I totally support as many bike, bike racks as we can fit there every single time. I just like, it's a zoo. And I mean, again, getting back to, you know, let's get people to ride their bikes, you know, make it easy to park a bike.
Good. Thank you for that input, how it works. The other thing that we're looking at doing is in right now, the service to this facility is single phase. And because of a lot of the pumps and motors that we're using as well as sustainability, we're looking at upgrading that service to three phase. So that's a pretty good chunk of money there to replace that transformer. It's about a hundred and $150,000 to do that. So that's within the number right now as well. And is solar hot water heating included in any of these estimates? We did, we did not include that in these estimates. We did do some, we did dig into that and we got some, our consultants gave us some response on that. Solar hot water heats tough in our climate with an out, with an outdoor pool in the summertime. Because what happens is that, that water heats up too, too hot. And now we can't displace that heat. And you got to find ways to cool that water down. And usually for us, what we can do is because we're not very humid, we can do loner or lunar cooling, which would be at night using spray jets of something to cool that water down. But otherwise, if we didn't find a way to cool that water down, the solar hot water heat would, would basically burn itself up and it won't last very long. Five to 10 years is what they're saying. And if we have a hot tub, could we use the, the excess water to heat the hot tub? That's a great question, possibly. Let me look into that. We'll check that, that might work out. We didn't ask that question. We were looking at ways to cool it down versus taking the heat of the body of water. Again, we, again, we include the hard costs, soft costs and escalation times money. So breaking it all down, again, we are at a $2 million just to replace the pool equipment and bring the pool shell and the pool up to speed, bring it up to date. The bathhouse renovation porch enclosure was around 1.1 million dollars. The amenities, some of those features that we're showing you earlier, about $500,000 for that. Site costs were coming up to 320. And then soft costs permitting, fees, taps, all those kinds of things are about 100, 550,000 for a grand total of 4.5 million. It's currently where we're sitting. Just so I'm clear, to, to add the two lanes, we would actually have to excavate out and add, put in more concrete and to add those, that two lane capacity. Okay. Yeah, we'd have to pull up that pool deck on the north side, excavate over about 20 feet, put a new pool wall and new gutters and things. Thank you. And new piping.
In, in putting these, these figures together, first off, thank you again for continuing to, to work with us on, on these massive projects. I know we've, we've got some, some preliminary numbers about like what it would cost to operate the pool in the non-summer months. So, so my question is, like to the extent that we are, you know, investing whatever we're going to be investing, 4.5 million dollars, $5 million on this, on this, on this pool, how much of that, if any, is put in there specifically so we have the option of operating in the off months versus it's going there anyway? Like is, like if, if this, if the council's not interested in operating it in off months, like is there $500,000 worth of, of work that is basically unnecessary because we're not interested in, in, in opening it in the off months? And then potentially could be saved and utilized for other purposes?
Right now, in, in these costs, we do not have the cost to operate that or the cost for a year round pool. Is that your question?
Well, there, there are, there are, there's an operating budget in this presentation for winter months.
Yes.
And summer months, right? So in order to operate it in the winter months, I, I was reading that as assuming that the, the pool is being designed to be able to handle that.
That's what we're looking into.
Right.
We wanted to see if that's an, if that, we want to consider that to see what that would cost.
And so, so I guess my, my question is, do we know, like is, if, if the council was just saying, we're not interested in operating it in the winter months, is there potential savings there available? You know, there's work that, that would need to be done if we were going to operate it during the winter that wouldn't need to be done if we weren't?
Right now we've designed it just to operate, right now we've designed and estimated to be able to function and open during the summer months. If we add it to, if you want to operate it during the winter months, we'd have to bump up the heating for the pool and the heating for the, and for the heating for the building as well.
Right, but in terms of like the actual capital investment on any of the equipment or any of the design upgrades, is there anything in this that would be unnecessary if we're not going to be using it during the winter?
Not at this point. We do not, no, we do not factor that right yet.
All right. Okay. One, one kind of just overall thought and just question for if, if there's going to be potential expanded concrete, you know, in the, in the design there to expand the patio out towards the north. One concern that I have is, you know, I want to make sure that the, the pool looks and feels new and doesn't just kind of look like we have like a patchwork of work that has been, been done and doesn't look and, I know we're not doing a new pool, but I think it's important to the, to the residents and taxpayers that they're getting something that kind of looks and feels shiny and new. And I think that the bathhouse certainly will, but I'm, you know, concerned about, you know, if the, the pool deck doesn't, then it's, I think it's like a missed opportunity. So I'm curious to know like what we would need to spend to make sure that the deck looks nice, you know, and whether that means like there's something aesthetically that we can do to, you know, have it uniform and, and looking like a brand new deck, even if it's not?
Sure, we can give a couple of some options, give you surprising for that. We could either think we could tear the whole thing out and just afford all the same, which would be probably the most cost, more costly option. Another option is maybe we do stain concrete. We could get a stain concrete on the new portion and we can maybe try and match the existing portion of it as well. But so there's a few things we could look into and.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I think pouring a brand new deck probably be the, obviously the best way, but if that's going to blow our budget, I mean, I have no idea what something like that would cost, but obviously you guys can.
Yeah, we can put some others together and send it over to you.
Just a question on this slide and the one before it. When we, when we go through this again, it'd be, it'd be helpful to know what it is on the revenue side, you know, are we, because I think, I think we've undercalled the revenue here in terms of what we're collecting right now. It's more than 2,800 a month. And then, you know, given the usage that we have, you know, look back at the last couple of years, what do we need to charge people just to get, break, break even? Like if we had a pool pass and, you know, we have unique number of visits, like, you know, how much would that pool pass need to be just to break even? Not going to charge that, but I'm trying to figure out like what's the right number for charging for the facility if we wanted to go, you know, to three season? Cause we did have elevations suggest to us that they pay $6,000 a month to operate or to use a facility. This is in 2019, so it's, you know, six years old. But I'm guessing, because they had been using the, the other outdoor pool, the Elks pool, but I think their, their issue is that, you know, the deck freezes and, you know, it's a trip hazard and all those things, right? So if we wanted to go to three months and elevations was willing to pay, let's, you know, 8,000 a month to use it, you know, how do we come out on the, on the, the relative expenses? Because I think one of the things that Jordan told me is, you know, between the winter and the summer, we're talking about lower operating hours in the winter, right? Because so we're paying less of our staff, but we're paying, you know, what'd you say? 6X on the energy cost, right? So, okay, great, we're open, but we're actually not open. We're heating the water, but you know, we're closed. So it's kind of counterintuitive to go after the, you know, the additional two seasons unless some third party wants to come in and subsidize that to, to an extent.
But I mean, looking at the numbers, like the, I agree with you. Like so, we've got higher heating costs in the winter than you do in the summer. You've got higher personnel costs in the summer because you've got more lifeguards. But generally speaking, it's about $50,000 a month.
Yeah.
To operate the pool, whether we're looking at the summer or the winter. So right now it's $200,000 a year to operate one pool. And if we extended that over the course of the full year, it could be as much as, you know, 600,000.
Yeah, but I mean, what I was thinking is not four months, we have four months, but not go to 12, but go to six.
Yeah, right.
Right? So go to 300 for the.
It's an extra $50,000 per month is kind of.
Right.
What I'm thinking the ballpark estimate's going to be. And, and based on the number of visits, like 7,000 visits during the summer, it's basically $28 per visit.
Which is a lot.
Something like that. Which, which is fine. I mean, you know, and what's, what's the average, you know, unit cost on visiting Purple Park? Or, you know, like you, you can't kind of necessarily factor this into like looking at it like a, like a, a business or anything like that, right? Like it's an amenity that our community likes and appreciates, but it's certainly if we wanted to expand this, the season, it's something to look into.
It would give us a relative idea of our operating expenses and, and so if, you know, Leslie needs to come back and say, we need to increase our operating budget by an extra, whatever, $60,000 a year to accommodate extra staffing and utility costs and things like that. It's, it's a data point for us to consider and we'd say, yeah, well, summer months it costs us 28 bucks a visit in the winter time and it's $72 a visit. I'm making up numbers. But it gives us a relative idea of, based on usage.
So looking at the, the actual mockup for the, if we can go back to the pool.
The drawings or?
Yeah, the drawings of, of the actual pool. So we, you know, we spent time talking about, you know, the, these mockups of what the building would look like, but can we go to the slide of the actual pool deck? So one, one thought here, like, I mean, I, I like the idea of, you know, increasing this, the shade on this side. I think the shade that we have here is already pretty good, but it can be better. And I know in some of the, the site visits that we, we looked at, some of the pools that we visited had shade that they don't take down in the winters. They just leave it up year round, which makes it a lot easier for staff, right? Cause right now our staff takes down the shade and then installs it. And then there's the, the possibility that it rips and it's just a, a lot of, a lot of work to do that. So I think it would be great if we could have, my personal opinion would be something that's year round that can withstand the elements would be great. And then on the site as well. I don't love the idea of putting in showers right here, showerheads. I don't, I'm not opposed to putting in showerheads, but I just don't like the location of putting that right there. I think that, that would be difficult. But in terms of, of the design, you know, here, I'm, I'm curious to hear what people think about the, given the discussion that we had with our park committee about the baby pool here, because your recommendation is to explore a splash pad instead of the baby pool. I don't know if staff has any thoughts on baby pool versus splash pad? We just had our, our meeting with park committee and they, they weren't, they didn't sound like they were thrilled with the splash pad.
Oh, really? I think in general staff and also we heard this a lot at our tours that we did of other facilities that people don't love the baby pool. It's, doesn't get utilized that much and people really love splash pads. So maybe that's a little contradictory and just while I'm up here. So the idea, we talked about the idea of putting shade structures kind of on that west side. And then someone mentioned that because the parents tend to sit over there to watch the swim meets, it might interrupt their view of the swim meets, the shade structures if they're kind of up on the hill a little bit. So just something to think about there. Do you have anything on splash pads?
Well, that's already the case now, right? Like the shade, I mean, so parents want to watch the swimmers, they come in and they sit there and they watch.
I, I mean, I think there's some options for the baby pool to be that zero depth entry, similar to what we have at South Pool with some splash pad amenities at one end. So that there's, I think there's some opportunity there to have some kind of a hybrid that maybe isn't so noisy and won't create too much of a ruckus, but yet provides that zero depth entry, which really the young kids like. It's that beach entry. It's, it's not as threatening to them to get into the water. And everybody else likes it too. to them to get into the water. And everybody else likes it too. So there might be some options along those lines. It's a hybrid of those two.
And based on the feedback from the open house, splash pad was the number one vote getter.
But not necessarily at the North Pool, right?
Right. Correct.
Okay. Do we have any, like, I, I know we, we looked at like the amenities, the aquatic amenities in, in the presentation. There's obviously a lot of them. Are there any like specific recommendations that you think are best for the North Pool versus for the South Pool at this stage?
I don't know necessarily if we have any preferences. I think, you know, it's nice to be able to create a pool that's, you know, multi-use, multi-function, has different things you can do in it, different programs, those kind of components. So, you know, if you want to keep the pool busy and keep it, keep people there, then you provide as many amenities as you possibly can within reason and not just so it doesn't deter from dislapse. So I mean, would be my recommendation.
But you're not recommending a slide at this pool?
No, I don't think so. I don't have, we don't have the space for the slide here. The slide would be more appropriate over at the other South Pool because it's already there and we've got a lot of deck there that we could use. I mean, it's, it's also limited in how big we can really make, you know, much of a waiting pool or a zero entry pool as well on this site. So it is a little, the site doesn't have as much space as a South Pool site, I'll say that. So there's more things that we could do over there than we can do here.
Okay. What, over here where we have the option B building, that's just like a shaded area.
It's kind of a nice sitting area.
Yeah, there's like tables and benches over there right now.
Picked up tables.
By the, by the tennis courts. All right. Yeah, I mean, that, that's a nice area. But, you know, given kind of the constraints of this building, I'd, I'd be open to the idea of having the mechanical and its own kind of dedicated space rather than forcing it into this building.
Yeah, with the one exception, because there's a lot of really old trees around that, like as long as we're not touching those trees.
Want to study that.
That is the pool that we primarily use and I didn't even know that was there, that corner.
This area?
Like I thought that, I didn't know there was anything back there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, like, I mean, so like the tennis courts are right, right here.
Tennis players use it a lot.
Yeah, so there's a, there's a little bench area there.
Was it outside of the pool?
It's outside of the pool. Yeah, so the pool, pool perimeter is right here. There's, there's a nice flowering cherry tree or something over there that.
I, I would just be cautious because now we're going into a whole different subset of people who use this stuff with the tennis people if they use that and we.
Take it.
Co-opted for the pool without talking to them first.
Well, I think, I think we could, I mean, I think this area probably gets used, like, like over here is a little more, like maybe there's an opportunity to kind of use some of this, not necessarily like this entire space, but kind of use like something like that, extend the fence.
Dining pool.
All right. So in terms of next steps and where we go from here, where do we go from here? What are the next steps?
Well, it kind of depends on if there is support for us kind of going down the path further on a three season pool or year round pool. I will say that just for, from a project standpoint, the next steps will be putting out the RFP for CMGC services. So that, that'll be going out hopefully maybe even tomorrow. So we'll be coming back with that to get a construction manager onboard. And they can come in as early as this stage and start helping with things. So it's fine that we don't have, that we're not farther along in design. So we'll be working on that. But I, I think really just trying to gauge the support for pursuing that design further, that would be helpful to us. We can keep going down the path of both options, but really ideally if we could get a little more guidance, that would be.
Yeah.
Helpful if possible.
Yeah, I mean, my, my personal opinion is I think having the flexibility to open in April and stay open until September, beginning October is something that I'd be open to and supportive of. Keeping something open year round doesn't seem like it would work in our climate and be really inefficient, really expensive. I don't think we'd have the usage to, to kind of justify it. In terms of just like a practical challenge, I know we've struggled in the past with just staffing lifeguards and, and all that. So I know that that has, has been a challenge with us keeping open for the existing season to begin with. So it's one of those ideas of like, okay, well, if you opened up in, in April and stayed open till September, like how, how would we staff the pool? But I don't think that that's like insurmountable, but I think it's, it's a real challenge. I wouldn't support necessarily doing anything from like a design. That's why, why my question was like, are we designing anything here to keep us open in like January? In which case, like if we were spending hard dollars to keep us open in January, I don't think that that's money well spent. Giving us the flexibility to be maybe open a little earlier in May or April and stay open a little later in September, that, that I think is good to design it to be able to accommodate. And then in terms of, of like the actual, you know, design, I think I'm on the fence on the splash pad versus the, the baby pool. I could kind of go either way. I will use a splash pad myself. I don't think I'll use the baby pool. They don't let me in the baby pool. I, I, I think that expanding this, this building to work better means that we're probably going to need to, to move the mechanical over here somewhat, but I do want to be mindful of kind of the impact on the tennis courts and all that. And then just increasing the, the storage and the, the shade and the deck, I think is, is smart. Don't tinker with the actual pool itself, just improve it and build it to last. And continue to engage with all of the, the main users of the pool to make sure that whatever design we're going with, they're onboard. We're not forgetting anything. Others?
Yeah, I, I wanted to just give some perspective on, I have a third grader and right now, like we, we joke that May is really like December, but in a bikini because it's crazy and everyone's busy and it's the end of seasons for sports, spring sports. And I've not been able to, no one's available. And so I don't know the usage of the pool would be very high at this point. Some people would use it. I don't know that it would be worth the, the cost. Maybe having it open a week or two before school ends. But also, you know, we've moved graduation ceremonies because of winter storms more than a few times since I've lived here. So I don't, I just, I'm not a big fan of the like expansion of timing, maybe a couple of weeks on each end, but nothing major. And I really like Leslie's idea of the zero, the entry with some aspects of maybe on the shallower part of the splash pad or like kind of running into, and I don't know what that means, like financially, if that exists or it's some hybrid of, but I did kind of an informal poll of some of the third grade parents' splash pad or kiddie pool, and it was like 50/50. So no one's given a clear answer on like what they want. So I think either one's going to meet, hopefully more than half the people are happy with whatever it is. Yeah, I just, I don't, there's nothing compelling me to want to expand the pool season beyond a little bit on each end at this point.
Yeah. I also just want to say that I, I think that the, you've, we've got a really tough job of trying to digest all the community feedback because you've got basically every opinion on every issue in different directions. Keep it open year round, don't do so, don't change it, change it, expand it, make it more kid friendly, don't, you know, and, and trying to figure out like what the right answer is. I mean, ultimately it's our call to make because we have to make that decision, but it's very difficult. So thank you for doing your best to try to digest this. I think, you know, in, in general, change is not something that people want to see. So they don't want to, they don't want us to muck with something that is already working. They want us to maybe improve the things that need improvement, but no significant change. Beyond what they're used to.
Change is difficult.
Yeah.
Well, you all gave us some great feedback and some input today. I think we have enough to work with here. We can move forward to progress the design further. I think this helps us a lot.
All right.
Appreciate your comments.
Any, any other thoughts from council members?
I would just say that I'm, I would, I like the idea of getting the mechanical out of the existing main building, just from a, not only from a safety standpoint, from, I think from an operation standpoint, that also might give some more creative flexibility with how we design that space to accommodate some of the feedback we receive from the flyers and some of the other public feedback. So I think the mayor was kind of leaning in that direction and I would also lean in that direction. And just getting back to the solar hot water, I'd really like us to really kind of think outside the proverbial box and how we can do that. And again, looking at ways where we can figure out how to use that waste heat, because it's free energy from the sun to heat our pools. And if that reduces our long-term operating expenses, I don't know, maybe there's hot water tanks that we can add in to store some of that extra capacity and use that for hot showers, adding in some potable water to cool down. You know, you guys are, the mechanical guys are, and gals are the experts on that, but I'd really like us to take a long hard look at that, please. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll look at some more options there too.
Great, thank you.
Anything else?
I don't think so.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are, anybody in the public want to give public comment on this item over here? All right, seeing none in the boardroom, anybody on Zoom like to give public comment? All right, seeing none. We are moving on to item six, which is our consent agenda, but it's 9:05. Why don't we take five minutes and we'll be back at 9:10? All right, we are back and we're onto item six, which is our consent agenda. We have polled items six E and six F. So I'll entertain a motion to approve consent agenda six A, B, C, and D.
So moved.
Okay, we've got a motion from Councilmember Shaw.
Second.
And just for the record, D is the first reading, so we're not actually approving. All right. Got a motion from Councilmember Shaw, a second from Mayor Pro Tem Servu. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. We do have a proclamation for Memorial Day. Do you want to read it?
Oops.
Sorry.
I'm so sorry.
We're picking on you a lot tonight.
Okay. This really, it is an honor to read this. So I appreciate it. A proclamation for Memorial Day. Whereas Memorial Day was first officially proclaimed on May 5th, 1868 by General John Logan in his General Order Number 11, and in 1968 by Act of Congress, it was determined that the holiday would be observed on the last Monday in May. And whereas the sacrifices that such members of the United States Armed Forces and their family members that support. family members that support them have preserved the liberties that have enriched this nation, making it unique in the world community. And whereas, as we observe Memorial Day, we remember the more than 1 million Americans who have died to preserve our freedom, the more than 140,000 residents who were prisoners of war, and all those who were declared missing in action, we also honor our veterans for their dedication to America and their sacrifice. And whereas on this Memorial Day, we honor our fallen soldiers and their commitment to our country and their legacy of patriotism and sacrifices of many women and men who answered then the nation's call to duty and fought with honor and valor, and in the end gave the ultimate sacrifice to safeguard the rights of all Americans. And whereas by giving their lives in this cause of freedom, these heroes have protected and inspired all Americans, and we are truly grateful for their sacrifice. Whereas the residents of Superior join with people across the nation in remembrance of those who died while courageously serving their country during war. And now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Mark Laces of the Town of Superior, Colorado, and the Town Council hereby dedicate and proclaim Monday, May 26, 2025 as Memorial Day in the Town of Superior and call this observance to the attention of all of our residents.
Thank you, Jen.
Yeah, thank you. And I do just want to add to that. It is a, as a veteran and as a spouse of a military person who's recently retired, and as a child of two military parents and grandparents, what our veterans, what our military service members do for our country is, it is a sacrifice throughout their life, however long they stay, and if they do give their life ultimately for what this country stands for. And I just, I always want to remind people that we swear an oath to the Constitution, not to a president, and I am very happy to continuously hear veterans and active-duty military people remind themselves and each other of that oath that they swore in these times right now. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jen. And thank you for your service. Okay, we're on to item six E. Neil, you polled this. This is consideration of resolution approving construction contract for Rock Creek Parkway and McAsland intersection.
I did, and mainly it's because, you know, Brandon and I have been emailing on this, and I think it's really important, because as anybody who's been a bike rider here, McAsland is part of the original course classic. This is the hump. It's a very important part. So I just wanted to talk through, like, what our bike detour is going to be, specifically on southbound, because, you know, people don't usually go northbound on the route with phases three and four. If you can kind of walk us through that, because anytime we've taken away lanes, we've taken a bike lane away, this is where accidents happen. We get poorly marked, poorly marked detours, and that's what happened in Lewisville tragically just a few years ago. And, you know, I'm just obsessive about bike detours and how they interface with traffic and speeds and everything else. And if you're coming up that hill and you're merging with traffic, how are we going to, you know, safely take care of those bikers?
Yeah, yeah, good question, Neil. And good evening, council. And I wasn't here, we did the first McAsland paving from Rock Creek to Main Street, but I did hear about some of the issues then, and understand that bikes were generally using the road, and it was creating some backups, not to mention safety issues, because it is slow going up that hill. So for phase three and four, we have a pre-construction meeting. So the width of McAsland, when you get outside of the turn lanes, so right in this area, is about 28 feet, 29 feet. So you have two 11-foot, 12-foot lanes, and then you have a five-foot bike lane. So putting all the traffic on one side of the road, there's not room to do two five-foot bike lanes and two travel lanes. So we are going to have to make accommodations. So we, I shared some thoughts with you, Neil, and like, looking at phase three specifically. I mean, one thought I have is, right here, we have a wide section of pavement. There is a curb cut approximately here for track H. So getting those northbound bikes actually off the asphalt onto the concrete is probably going to be the best solution, once it starts merging down into two lanes. So we get those northbound bikes off here, have them go down the roundabout, which they're supposed to get off the road at the roundabout anyway, keep them off through the roundabout. You could potentially have a lane for southbound bikes separated, so you could have four foot for bikes and then two travel lanes that are about 11 feet wide. Looking at phase four, it would be the opposite. Really, bikes will be able to use this whole section of asphalt during construction. It will be closed to cars, I'm sorry, went too far. It'll be closed to cars, but bikes can fit through those barrels, and they could remain in the roadway coming up the hill. They would then have to merge, which would be difficult, I will admit that. And when flaggers are there, they can help, but when they're not in off-hours, the bikers would have to be cognizant and merging in with traffic to get through the last, say, 500,000 feet of construction zone. But that was one thing we looked at, is keeping them on the asphalt. In phase two, sorry, let me go to phase two. Phase two is kind of the same problem, because we have both sets of cars over here. So one thought we had is getting the southbound bikes off at the Freyco ditch area, so getting them off the road, so they're staying on the path up through here, and then merging back onto the road after you get in this section here. So there's some options we looked at. I don't have a great solution here. It is a difficult situation. I know it is a very popular bike ride. I drive this road daily, and I see the bikes on it. But it's something we'll have to work through, and we might have to make modifications during construction to try to make it work.
Okay, yeah.
If there are suggestions, I'm all.
Yeah, no, number one, I do want to, when we, when we worked on the green paint issue, I think Alex reached out to the Bicycle Alliance. I mean, the main thing is getting the word out that this is happening, you know, so, because people will start on the route, you know, in Boulder, and all of a sudden they're here, and they're like, why the hell didn't someone not tell me that this is happening? Because I would have just not ridden out here. And, you know, once you're here, then you're stuck, because you got it, no one wants to go back. We just got to make sure that people are aware that this is happening, and then that way they can sort of adjust accordingly. And then, you know, as much signage as possible on, you know, who needs to merge and where. And this is especially true for the cars, right? Because bikers are the ones that are asked to be defensive, even though they're not surrounded by, you know, 2,000 tons of metal. And the drivers tend to act relatively arrogant about, you know, who gets to use a road. So what I just want to remind, you know, all the drivers is it's a shared roadway for everybody, and we just need to make sure that, you know, we keep the speed limits really low here, so that, you know, people don't feel like the need to accelerate around a bike that's going, you know, 15 miles an hour up the hill, which is actually a really fast speed. Eight, yeah.
And we do have one, down to one lane currently with the water main construction. And I've not seen any issues. I actually have seen bikes getting off and using the sidewalk path up the hill, which is encouraging, because it is pretty narrow for a bike to use that currently.
Yeah, there's big piles of dirt on the road, too.
Yes.
This is all great. And then the only other question I had, which I did put the email. So when we, when we restripe the intersection, are we going to add green bike boxes? You know, we've had the green crossing, I don't even know what they're called, the crossing zebras. But, you know, one of the other things that we've always been talking about are the green bike boxes, so you can filter through the lane up to the front.
Yeah, I'd have to pull the, I'm trying to get to the plan sheet that shows this.
I didn't see it in there, which is why, and I should have asked this like, two months ago, and I just forgot.
So currently, we don't have the green bike markings going in. If we added them, the one approach that would call for them is this one here going northbound on McAsland. So that'd be the one location to add them. We don't have the volume with this movement. When, when McAsland has the red light, we don't have the volume, really, for these two movements to justify, or this movement with the crossing. So the one movement that would justify would be this one. We can add them. I know we got some pushback at Rock Creek and Indiana because of how busy it got with the green bike markings. So we definitely get mixed input on that. But there was one movement we would add it, it would be this movement here.
The reason I bring it up is, this is actually an example of where you don't need it, because I agree with you, the volumes don't make, make any sense. You know, north and south on McAsland, you don't need it because the bike lanes are reasonably large. But I want this to be part of our dialogue when we do these intersections and restripe them. Like, do they make sense? What does the data say? I agree, Indiana and Rock Creek is kind of a mess of paint, but that's because we try to do too much in one spot. But I think with this intersection, since we redid McAsland and we have good bike lanes, I don't know that it makes any sense to change anything, because you're not, most bikers aren't crossing to the Key Bank, they're just going north and south on McAsland. So, yeah, so I don't have any other questions. It's just more of, you know, getting the word out about the, the construction of McAsland. This is the hump. You know, we did the wall, like, what, two years ago, three years ago? And that's where we had problems, because we went to one lane, and drivers don't like being stuck behind bikers, especially going up the hill or the hump. The hump or the wall, rather, so, yeah. On e-bike, it's a different story, but.
I'll just add my two cents and say that I agree that we should not do the green paint here. And I'll go further and say also, when we're doing the Rock Creek Parkway work this summer, and we do the intersection and pave it, I would take away the green paint at Indiana and Rock Creek Parkway, because I think it's very complicated and confusing for pedestrians, bicyclists, and drivers.
I think there's been some learning. I think people are acknowledging what the green paint is to do, is to warn everybody bikers cross here.
I think, I think the green paint works good to signify, like, bike lanes, but I think intersections are kind of uniquely challenging. And when we add, like, all this stuff on the, on the road, and it, I think it ends up confusing people more than clarifying where we should go. But that's just my opinion.
I have no other comments, so I can, I can move to approve the resolution.
I will, I will add one thing, since we pulled this item. But in the Vision Zero Action Plan, one of the recommendations in that plan is looking at raised crossings, where you have free-flow right turn lanes. You see a lot of those in Boulder. We talked about that with this intersection, but we didn't feel like the pedestrian-to-car conflict ratio warranted it. Obviously, we have a very high right turn movement here, but we have a low pedestrian movement, and I think it'll be lower once we put in this at-grade crossing up here at track H. So I just wanted to add that, if you do read the Vision Zero, you'll see that recommendation, looking at that, at free-flow right turns. It didn't specify this intersection. But we are not proposing that at this time, just due to the volumes in both movements, right turns and pedestrians.
That's fair. I can think of like, 10 other intersections that could use it before this one.
I think the only time I've crossed that street was to put out a campaign sign.
I cross it a lot to get to the Meyer Hoffer, but yeah, it's, it's, it's an easy one to cross. Or I just run across it on McAsland.
All right.
Okay, I'll move to approve Town of Superior Resolution Number R-28, Series 2025, Resolution of Town Council of Town of Superior, approving the contract with Brandon Sand and Gravel Company LLC for the 2025 Rock Creek Parkway and McAsland Boulevard Intersection Improvements Project.
All right, we got a motion from Councilmember Shaw. Second from Mayor Laces. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Protem Servu?
Yes.
Councilmember Foster?
Yes.
Mayor Laces?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Cowish?
Yes.
All right, passes unanimously. Thank you, Brandon. We are on to item six F, which is the consideration of the resolution approving goat grazing agreement for FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. Mike, you polled this?
Yes, thank you. I just want to say that I think goats in our community is probably the one issue that just about every single person agrees with. So I just want to acknowledge Goat Bros and all the work that the town staff have been doing to make sure we've got goat grazing. It's incredibly popular. The kids love it. And I want to acknowledge Goat Bros for all the work that they're doing at Arbor Day and National Night Out. They basically set up a small petting zoo, and the kids can feed the goats. I just think it's a wonderful community amenity. So I just want to say kudos to Goat Bros and town staff. The one question I do have, and you, I don't need an answer tonight, but perhaps during the weekly update would be great. The per-acre cost for goats is about $1,100, and I was just curious how that compares to some of the other jurisdictions that are using Goat Bros or goat grazing. So again, I don't need an answer tonight, but if that's something that could follow up with, that'd be really helpful. Otherwise, I'll move to approve.
You move to approve what?
Town of Superior Resolution R-29, Series 2025, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Superior approving an agreement with Goat Bros for goat grazing services through the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program.
All right, we got a motion from Councilmember Foster.
Second.
Second from Mayor Protem Servu. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Foster?
Yes.
Councilmember Cowish?
Yes.
Mayor Laces?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Servu?
Yes.
All right, passes unanimously.
I just, Matt, this question that I think is for you. On the FEMA, on the grant, are there, how long does that last? Like, do we have any concerns about that going away? Or?
The funds have been secured for this year. It's an annual thing, so, yeah.
Yeah, and we, our grant administrator is online, if you have any really specific questions. But generally speaking, the award is for one year. The application is for three years, but they award it each year, so.
Yeah, and I know Congressman Goose's office is interested in knowing if there's any hiccups with any FEMA or other grants that have been approved or, or in the pipeline. All right, we're on to item seven, which is consideration of a request for economic development program incentive for proposed downtown Superior restaurant, BB.Q Chicken.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll, I'll start this one off. So the town's economic development program has had a chance to evolve and change over the years. The phase through COVID and then eventually developing a more formal program and adopting, or the council adopting, and add the addition of an economic development manager position a few years ago has really raised our game over the years. So the latest item that was the part of this program was the council's decision to provide some direction at the last work session to make our business grant incentive program more formal. And really, it just uses it as a, as a tool to make, to encourage businesses to potentially locate here, to expand, to grow, and to launch here. So as part of this current outreach work, staff has received an application for a restaurant interested in opening in Main Street in downtown Superior. It's a franchise known as BB.Q Chicken. It's a quick-serve Korean fried chicken and appetizers restaurant. The owners are here tonight. They're Superior residents, Cynthia Pham and Tim Roman. During the council's March 10 meeting, they had a chance to introduce themselves and their business proposal to you. They followed up by sending an, an application to staff to request that council considers a $75,000 cash grant and a $25,000 sales tax rebate incentive. This is the request that's on the council's agenda for consideration tonight. I'll ask Cynthia and Tim to come up and answer any questions that the council might have for them. And then included in your meeting materials with the cover memo is a copy of the business plan document that was reviewed by the council during the March 10 meeting.
Welcome.
Good to see you guys.
How are you? Good, doing well?
All right, so, so we obviously met you previously. You, you fed us, and we appreciate that always. So the, the ask that you have tonight is different from the, the ask that you had previously. So why don't you tell us how things are going, what has changed, where your head's at, and we could take it from there.
Yeah, much has changed since we were up here last time. So as of just this past Friday, we found out that the space that we were previously in, or planning to be in, we were not going to be able to build out this restaurant into that space due to an incompatibility with exhaust ventilation. So that's the number one thing on the board. We are looking to take the space immediately next door, if possible, or try to get some bids for that space as well, and see if that will be better for what we're looking to build out. That space will incur a little bit more money to build out, but will also add a bit more space as well, which would be a positive. And being that both of those units are not yet occupied, we'll have the ability to build the ventilation out as we intended previously. In the space on Building 1110, where we were looking previously, we would actually have to venture into an already occupied space where Menche's currently resides. And we would have to have a grease cleanout within the, the dimensions of their restaurant. So that is one of the main issues that has stopped us in our tracks. So we initially have to pivot and start moving in the direction of doing, taking the space next door and trying to, try to build out there if possible.
When you say the space next door, is that the 1101?
Building 10. Building 10.
Okay.
I'm not sure what that suite number is on the corner.
It's one, yep. Building 10, unit one.
So that would be across promenade?
Mm-hmm, directly, yeah.
Yeah.
30 feet away.
Okay.
Yeah, we toured the site, that space today with Yeah, we toured the site, that space today with Molly from CBRE. We're trying to get Carmel on a call this week because we have some travel plans coming up on Sunday. We'll be gone for three weeks out of the country. So we'll see if we can get that meeting on the calendar with them.
And, and what? Do you know like what Carmel is willing to do in terms of, you know, partnering with you on, you know, any upgrades to that particular spot?
We don't have any indication as to what they might be willing to do for the, the spot that we've, that we're now looking at. I think we kind of landed on a figure for the previous space. So now we'll have to adjust our numbers based on square footage. Just the overall layout of the restaurant is different. So I think we'll have to have those talks this week and try to iron out those numbers as quickly as possible. You know, we would like to get moving on this as well. So we're anxious to get in talks with them soon.
Okay.
How much was Carmel willing to offset your build costs here? I mean, it's really hard for me to think about what the town is contributing if we don't know what Carmel was contributing or might be contributing to this new space.
So in terms of what I think we're, what I think we're going to end up having to spend, I would say section per section. So the HVAC previously, we were looking at around $360,000 just for the ventilation for the kitchen as well as HVAC. And that includes return air, return tempered air and all of that. And any, you know, equipment that might have to go with that. And they were looking to provide, I think $214,000 was the number that we were looking at for that based on square footage alone. And that also did not include, you know, any of the sound abatement or anything else that they required from us or any of the need to drill into the ground. So 214 didn't go as long as, you know, we were hoping, hence the previous larger ask that we had for financial incentive. I know that was, that was a lot, but at this point, we're not going to have to spend any less on HVAC. It's still going to be the same equipment, same layout and all that. Just one thing that we can't do with the old space is venture into Menche's space as well. So we don't want to stop them in their tracks as well.
Got it. Okay. Yeah. I mean, there's another business. They spent a hundred thousand on the sound attenuation, right? So it's, it's not cheap.
Not at all. Not at all.
Yeah. Okay.
So I think we do have some figures that we're looking to spend for the sound attenuation, but we're still, you know, now that we have a new plan that we have to place, I have to get the drawings in as soon as possible to get those checked by the franchiser. Cross check those with the architect to make sure that they are, you know, sound for, for legal issues. And then we can get them to the mechanical, electrical plumbing, get actual bids coming in and then check those again with the contractors that we'd previously talked to and just kind of compare notes. Overall, I don't think there's going to be any reduction in cost going on the new space in, in any terms due to the larger square footage by about, I think 500, yeah, 500 square feet more. It'll be a little bit more to build out, but most of that extra space will be dining area. So it'll, you know, again, just polished floor and all that, whatever it contains, and then a little extra furniture. We're still looking to have the same seating. I think that we previously quoted about 85, 88 seeds somewhere in that, in that neighborhood. So yeah, as long as we can get everything on track, we're, we're still willing to move forward.
And Tim, is Carmel, you know, you're going 500 square feet more. Are they going to up the tenant finish dollar to accommodate that or are they?
We don't know. We haven't talked to them.
We hope so. We hope so. We, we would really need that at this point.
I, I would think it's typically it's based on square footage. You get a bigger building, you get a bigger TI. But you're fairly confident that the HVA system is not going to change the price to go north, but it's certainly not going to go south, even though you're not going to have to entertain going through Menche's space, right?
Right. Yeah. There won't be any reduction in cost. It's still the same layout. Basically at this point though, one of the reasons that we're picking this, this new spot is because if you looked at the origin plans for downtown, all of the restaurant end caps, it's, they have it's kind of divided into two. Each one of those, those units can be divided. You have to get the little small section and the big section. But on the Carmel plans, they state that the large section is for the restaurant and the small section is the kind of, you know, multi-use, whatever it ends up being retail. The issue is that the only ventilation is in the small unit. So if you were to build a restaurant, you would have to have both units. So by going in there first into this particular space, we can actually run our ventilation across an unused portion of that, that smaller unit and try to claim that before anybody else builds out in it, which would, that's, that would help us the most. So, yeah.
We should get a meeting with Carmel, you know, in, in one of our work sessions as soon as possible to just kind of talk.
Multiple times. We'll continue to ask.
Okay. Is there a chance we just crashed their office?
I will meet with them next week as well.
Yeah. Yeah. No, because it, it really is a, you know, the, the way it's set up. And I'm trying, I'm trying to be fair here about, you know, developers, when, when they set up corn shell spaces. There, there has to be an initial assessment of what could possibly be going into the space.
Sure.
And not just, hey, we're going to throw this out here and gee, you want to put a restaurant out? We only did a nail salon. Sorry. You can't do that. Or the ventilation systems don't match. So I, I really would love to have that conversation with, with Carmel. If they're going to be going forward with these and they're going to be giving tenant finish dollars for, for businesses that really do want to come into our community and become a part of our community, there just has to be a little bit more understanding of the process, especially what the council is willing to do to try to get businesses in. So yeah, I'd like to do everything we possibly can. You know, fantastic idea, Mark. Yeah, let's, let's have a chat.
Okay.
And I can, I was only going to interject. I mean, I can at least attest to the fact that, you know, I met with Carmel last year and the year before, and they did indicate that they were continued to support these businesses. They don't like to disclose a dollar amount publicly because it puts them at a disadvantage on all their other businesses and everything else. But they at least, you know, when, you know, two years ago, we talked about Big Spies, a year ago it was Boulder Baked. Both businesses are, are moving forward because they made, you know, they, they made an equitable, you know, relatively comparable contribution to what the town did. So, you know, I think, and this board operated in the same, because we at least heard from Carmel. Right now, given that you guys are going through this big shift with Carmel, it's, it's hard to have a conversation without having them in the room as part of this conversation, knowing that you're having a shift from one building to the other and, and everything that goes with it. And it sort of feels like, you know, absent something from them, I'm reticent to move too far forward on this because of the simple fact. Track record last two years is they at least, you know, outside of a public meeting, committed to, you know, making these other two businesses successful and they follow through. I'm hesitant, you know, until they make that commitment to, to go too far, until they step up and, and indicate that they're willing to do the same thing here.
Well, we can make, and Nick, so this is a question for you. So if we are going to move forward with structuring, any incentive that we're offering tonight, we can make that contingent upon whatever we want, right? Like we contingent upon like the, the developer making a, you know, accommodation on the, the tenant finishes or whatever it's going to be to, to kind of show that they've got skin in the game as well.
Yeah. Just make it really clear what that is in the motion and make it, you know, concrete and actionable, not necessarily contingent upon Carmel.
Or similarly like make it contingent upon the, the Cynthia and Tim like going forward with it, right? Like we're not just necessarily giving,
Yeah.
giving cash out to somebody that's not going to open up a business, right? Like we want to, we want to make sure that the, the money is going to result in a business that's actually opening.
Yeah. I would still, this may be kind of for you guys to have a, have a benchmark in that motion. You know, when, when, I'm just kind of thinking back like Big Spies incentive agreement, you know, it said contingent. I don't remember exactly, but it was something like contingent upon applying for a CO or something like that. Where it was like a clear, you know, point in time where something happened. I would pick something like that at least. But that one was tax credit driven. So. Yeah, it was a different thing, but you know what I mean. It is about, you know, having a spot where it's going to open. We chose, we chose that.
Okay. Martin, do you want to come up and talk about the staff recommendation?
So the staff recommendation, yes, Mayor, the policy discussion that the council had during the March, or the last work session was to establish a threshold. The town manager and I worked with the economic development consultant that's been working with us for several years to develop through, I think, three tiers, three different sizes that provide an opportunity for businesses that bring a restaurant, quality development, something that's unique to our market and give that, establish that threshold as a, as a dollar value. And that's why the number that you saw in the staff recommendation is $50,000. And then a potential for another $50,000 of sales tax, as a sales tax rebate differs than what the request was. The policy alignment in this case is $50,000 for the upfront grant to be consistent with that policy. And that can be changed or amended or taken on a case by case basis like the town's elected officials have in the past when considering requests like this. So it's a starting point, not a ending point.
Martin, just a quick question. When we're talking about sales tax rebates, how does that work with use taxes? Are we crediting them against use taxes or only on future sales?
It's future sales.
Okay. So, you know, our tax rate went up. So use taxes between, in this case, the applicant and the developer, whoever's paying for the infrastructure, they'll pay the new use tax rate, but the sales tax credits would come off against future sales. Okay. Thanks.
And Martin, are there other things, other incentives that the town can offer? Permit fees or, or refund, things like that that could help? Cause I realize that, you know, they're looking for more cash upfront, but staff recommendation is, is again, something more consistent with our policy. But are there other things that, that the town could do that could help with the incentive structure?
Well, the other tool that the town board, or the town council has is plan check and permit fees. So the split that the town has with the firm that provides building inspection service for us and does plan review is a 5347 split that is coordinated on an annual basis. So the town's portion of that could be borne by the general fund at some point. And then it would be something that the town would be supporting through that fee. But safe build would still have to be made whole for their hours. And then the county's tax would be up to them. And I don't think there's any indication that they'd be willing to forgive that.
Can you, can you just clarify it? Cause I see it written in here that, that referencing the $50,000 as a standard. And I hear people using the word policy, but we don't have a policy on this. Like there is, this has been a case by case to this point, correct?
It has been up until I think the, the last incentive that the council approved was for Boulder Baked. And then during the, I think during the last work session, when the staff proposed a chart that showed the three different levels and the three different sizes and incentive increments was what we were starting with. We got some positive feedback from that. We're going to use that as a.
It's three tiers based on lease space size.
Yeah.
It's a 25, 50 and 75,000 tier levels. But that's the starting point, as Martin mentioned.
Right.
I mean, we can, we, we have unique cases that we, you know, can go outside of those policies if the council wants to.
I recall discussing, I just didn't think we like vote, I mean, maybe didn't need a vote, but that there was like a formal establish of like, this is the process that we're going to use.
Established a few years.
I just don't want to go that way if that's not what we did as like a.
No, we have a program established, but anything over $50,000 requires the council's action.
Okay.
Right.
And the point was to kind of give it some shape. You know, I think that an item that the council talked about at that time was preventing, providing some predictability for potential tenants here. And that this is a step toward that. So people have an idea of what to expect.
Would the increase in square footage move them up one tier?
No, I think it's the, the 2,000 plus tier. I think they're already at that.
Yeah, that's correct.
2,000 plus square feet. Sorry.
I, I would really like to hear from, I think I feel the same way as Councilmember Shaw. And I think others that like, we don't have the input from Carmel and what they're doing. But I also, I just want to say that the, the situation that this is, was created by, I, I don't know what, but previous, you know, decision makers. And here we are. And I don't want to see, I want to do everything we can to help. And I don't want to see this put on the, the burden of someone who lives here and is trying to start a business here. So I'm just more leaning in the direction of providing more or what, like what they're asking for versus the 50, 50. So that's just where I'm at on this.
Okay. I did get, just for the council's information, I got Stephanie and Heather's thoughts. And both of them were supportive of staff's suggestions. As Stephanie said, she supports the $50,000 incentive with the $50,000 tax rebate and look, look forward to welcoming them to downtown and or that was Heather's. And Stephanie said, I'm in favor of the 50, 50 split as well for BB dot Q Chicken. And so they're in favor of going forward with, with staff's recommendation. Why don't we open it up for any public comment? If there's anybody here in the council room that would like to give a public comment? Anybody on Zoom like to give a public comment? All right. Seeing none, we'll circle back to, to the council. I mean, my, my feeling is, you know, I'm very excited to have people come to Superior and, and invest in, in downtown. And I want downtown to be a success. So I'm supportive of, I'm certainly supportive of staff's recommendation. I think I could be convinced to potentially do something in addition to that, if that's the direction that we want to head in. But I'm, I'm in favor of moving forward with staff's recommendation. I, I do want to meet with Carmel and, and talk to them and, you know, see what the developer is willing to do. But I think, you know, at this stage of where we're at in terms of the economy, in terms of where we're at with this stage of the, the development, I think we need to do everything that we possibly can to support the businesses that are going to come in and invest and create jobs and create destinations for people to go. And people have been clamoring about having places to go eat in downtown and actually get a meal. So, you know, here we have people who are actually prepared to, to provide that. So I think we should work to make that happen. So. We haven't issued any economic development incentives this year. In 2025, we've budgeted for them. And, you know, while, you know, we did get at least, you know, one email from, from a resident who said, you know, are we being fair to other businesses? Part of this is also we incentivize the, the people that are coming and asking, right? And it's, it's not necessarily always going to be fairly and equally applied to all businesses and all locations. We need to, to look at this as an investment in our community. And if somebody's coming to the, to the council through our economic development team saying, hey, look, I really want to make something happen here and leverage the tools that you have in the toolkit. We should be prepared to use that toolkit when, when it's available. So that's kind of where my head's at right now. I'm supportive of the staff recommendation, but I'm also okay with doing something in addition to that, if that's what Jen, if that's what you're kind of indicating as well.
Yeah. I, I would like to do the 75,000, 25,000, the, the way that they asked for it in their proposal. But I, the, I mean, if others have opinions about that, this is the time, but to your point, you know, that the email from the resident that, that shared some kind of like, other businesses, if they were able to find, you know, fill these gaps, then, and they did that on their own, that's great. But the reason like you're coming is because you're looking for support and, and want to do this. And so I don't want that at all to be a reason why, you know, because we did X, now we can't do, you know, whatever it is that you specifically need for this. And I agree with you completely that I have a lot of concerns about economics in the next couple of years. And I feel like we need to get whatever we're going to have going, like as soon as possible. And so this is just. And so this is just, to me, it's like, the more that we can give and support, especially because we haven't done any yet this year, then I would like to see it be a higher amount than what was recommended by staff, the 75,000.
So just a couple of quick comments on that. You know, I think when I, when the applicant came here in March, they didn't want to take an SBA loan. So we have another business that took a 200,000 SBA loan, right? And he didn't come to us for a grant. So it's not an apples-to-apples comparison if one applicant would rather take government money and doesn't want to take SBA money. Because I would love to offer the town money as a loan, where I'm not a huge fan of big grants because there's no downside protection for the town, right? As much as this pains me, a parent's at a restaurant, they have a very high failure rate, and it's difficult. You know, where Carmel has been very judicious about, you know, the expansion there, they're looking for people to open the second or third facility, so they got a track record, they got a second business that they can rely on for cash flow. I want to make sure that our taxpayer dollars are protected. I am much more in favor of performance-based sales tax credits as opposed to cash off the barrel. You know, Menchies is 15K, right? So, and that's an existing chain, you know, and at Menchies, it's a lot about in-house dining. This is 40% takeout. We talk about trying to activate downtown. High throughput is not necessarily, you know, DoorDash, Grubhub, maybe not necessarily the business that is best to throw money behind. That's my feeling. I'm, again, I'm a huge fan of sales tax credit, credit incentives. My company's getting a $200 million credit. I'm not getting a single dollar from the government. It's a credit against, I have to hire 100 people, I have to get paid over 75,000 a year, I get to invest a billion in capital, that's how I get the credit. But not $1 is coming from the government because they don't want to take away from what it is that they could do also otherwise. But they want to give me back the money that I'm investing. So I'm in favor of that, but I can't even give a dollar unless I know specifically what Carmel is committed to. Because we might make an agreement here, and Carmel may say, you know what? No. In which case, now what we've done is we've actually got some other businesses in town that are actually really upset that we're going so aggressive and they got nothing. And there's another business just down the street, they consider themselves part of downtown, and they're not getting, they didn't get anything. And maybe they didn't ask the question, maybe they didn't know who to ask. You know, a lot of times, people don't know who to ask. Even though we've had economic development, this board's a little bit more generous, I don't know, right? So those are the things. I hate creating, you know, uncertainty for businesses because we keep changing what we're doing. But if it's sales tax-based, if it's credit-based, if it's performance-based, then it's a known, you perform, you get something back.
I agree with everything that's been said, and I would also acknowledge that, you know, this, this business has been looking for certainty, and they've had nothing, they've had nothing close to certainty with, from Carmel and the space and having to find new space. So if there's some small modicum of certainty that we can provide to this business so that they've got a little bit of assurance that they can open up and contribute to the fabric of downtown and our community, I'm on board. I'm more inclined to lean towards staff recommendation, just because I think the, to Neil's point, the larger cash upfront is a little bit uncertain, but I also understand that, again, business, the business needs some certainty, and if the $50,000 upfront provides some level of certainty with the credit down the road, that, I would be supportive of that. But I do think that I would like to be some pillar of, again, support and consistency and certainty for BB.Q to open up. So that's kind of where I'm coming from.
Sure, if I may comment. So we are also looking to take out an SBA loan on top of this due, because you remember, our last request was sizable. And due to kind of the delta between where, what we were requesting and what we're kind of offered now, there's quite a big difference. And then also, going into the new space, there's also going to be an additional cost on that as well. We are definitely looking into getting an SBA loan as well. So we'll have a few different ways of financing this thing, but overall, the project will be, you know, a seven-figure project. So, you know, any help is very welcome.
And again, I want to make sure we can do whatever we can to get restaurants, businesses open before Sundance. Because I think everybody's going to benefit from that. And I think Councilmember Craig Craft said there's like a $318 million local economic benefit. Granted, that's not just going to be in Boulder, but I mean, across the region, that's massive. And if that means that, you know, there's 500 or 600 people that come into downtown to shop or eat cookies or, you know, eat barbecue, great, let's take advantage of that.
Right, but why taxpayer dollars to take advantage of that? You know, because the free market's going to make the money from that. Government, we're going to get, remember, we get no property tax from downtown, right? The only thing we might get is some sales tax. So if the opportunity is truly there, why is government having to get involved?
Because government's getting involved elsewhere, right? And so we're competing with our neighbors.
It's an unmoveable playing field.
Right, so it's not a free market.
I mean, to the mayor's point, I mean, the federal government subsidizes agriculture in this country to the tunes of hundreds of billions of dollars so we can eat cheap food. I mean, if we had the true cost of a tomato, it would be $8, $9. But no, we can go to Safeway and spend less than a buck for a tomato. Why is that? Because taxpayers have subsidized the cost of growing a tomato.
Do you feel like our presence would help other businesses downtown by establishing ourselves early?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, so let me throw my, before you start going off on rails on this, I've been working with you guys from the beginning, since I met you last year. You guys are fighting to open up a business, and I definitely appreciate the fact that you have not punted and walked away despite all the difficulties you've had with Carmel, looking in a different shop. And I really like to think that the business community in this town is going to pull together and not splinter because one entity is getting X amount and another entity maybe didn't ask for it or didn't know about that. And to answer the question on, you know, the businesses or the people that are saying, you know, I didn't get anything or I didn't ask for something, I am reaching out to these businesses. I've had conversations with several of these businesses about the issues of parity, and they can always come back and ask for a tax-based incentive. They can always come back and have a conversation with us based on that. But what my concern is, is I don't think this is tied to Carmel one bit, and I really don't care what Carmel, I do hope Carmel treats you fairly, but what we give you should have nothing to do with what Carmel is going to give you. This is something that the town is going to have to consider giving a business. And, you know, we've got amazing businesses that have already opened up, right? But we've got Menchies, right? Going to be opening soon, fantastic, can't wait. We've got Crack Boba, we've got Boulder Baked, we've got Sweet, Sweet, Sweet. We need a restaurant, and we can't seem to get one to open. We're still waiting for Big Speeds, they haven't broken ground yet. We had a great presentation earlier, but bird in the hand, two in the bush, right? This is something that we have to get started. 50/50, to me, is not an egregious ask. I don't even think 75/25 is an egregious ask. It's a little bit more money on it, and if you want to really think about how much we're spending on something like this, and forgive me, guys, I'm not making any assumptions, but we've dropped $650,000 on a lawsuit that we got appealed, $650,000 that we could be developing towards businesses, and I'm not making a statement or judgment on that, I'm just saying $75,000 and $25,000 is a drop in the bucket compared to that. So I would like to see, sorry, I'm just exhausted, man, my voice is going out, I'm not, I'm not being emotional, I'm just exhausted.
You've been going all day.
I would just, I would just love to see us try to do everything we possibly can to get the first restaurant a good start. And if, you know, we've talked about this before, maybe the first one gets the 75, the next one's going to get the 50, then the 25, and then that's it, or whatever it might be. But let's give the people that are here and they're still fighting to try to get this thing open, a fighting chance to get on board, open up on Main Street, get a draw, get a crowd. I think your timeframe says you're still going to be opening in probably, what, 10, 12 months from now?
I mean, we're looking to open, if we can, by the end of the year, January timeframe.
Okay, that's still '26, right? That's before '27, you're before, you know, you're before the big Sundance Festival's going to open up. But in the meantime, also, other businesses, like other restaurants I've talked to, are waiting, well, let's see somebody else open first. Let's see somebody break the ground first, because we're not sure your town is going to be able to sustain this. And I'm always like, no, man, we are going to sustain this because people will come. I want to see the first ones have an opportunity to open it, and that's why I'm absolutely in favor of the 50/50, and I'm even more so in favor, to Jen's point, of the 75/25, because I would like to see somebody step up and open a restaurant on Main Street.
Yeah, and just to clarify, we plan on verifying that, you know, any costs that we have put out, any, you know, bills we have paid for contractors, we can show you ahead of time before we receive any funds. So there's no money upfront before we even get started, there's no, you know, we want to make sure that everything is clean, verified, and, you know, transparent, so.
Yeah, my, thanks for that. My concern is, if we're going to be giving any money, whether it's 50,000, 75,000, $1, I want to make sure that it's not going into, you know, preliminary work that doesn't actually result in actually opening their doors, right? So if there's, if there's money that's going out, and this should be like the policy for all incentives, like, there's a guarantee that they're going to open their doors and they're going to actually, I think that that is understood, but it should be express in whatever.
CEO level, right?
Yeah.
What CEO is issued, is that funding?
Yes, that's where we're looking.
Yeah, and, you know, hopefully that wouldn't be an issue because you'd be able to account for it and you'd be able to pay yourself back from, you know, that money once it comes, once the CEO issues or what have you. But that way, there's the certainty that the business opens and the money doesn't just get spent on preliminary work that doesn't actually result in the business opening.
Yeah.
So.
We're not looking to buy a brand-new HVAC for Carmel and walk away. I can guarantee you that.
That's, it's good to hear.
Well, that is kind of one of the, one of the problems with startup businesses like this, because they are going to make all the investment, and then let's say they go three, four years, they can't make a go of it, Carmel's going to make a killing on the next one in because they're not going to have to do very much tend-to-finish or very much renovation, the next restaurant's going to come in, utilize that, and get rolling. So it's, you know, the first startups are always the hardest ones for something like this. I just want to give them a fighting chance to get some level of success for our town.
Yeah.
Jason, you bring up a really good point, and that's the reason why second-generation retail space is flying off the shelves, right? You know, as soon as it pops open, it is gone. It's this first generation that's sitting on the fence. It's not just us, but this is where, you know, again, if you think about the TIF that we offer to the developer, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars, they have a big stake here that doesn't seem that they're really pursuing, right? And it's, for me, it's about throwing more tax dollars after an enormous bill that we wrote, right? We wrote a huge check in terms of tax credits, and again, it's not cash out the door, but the point is, you know, we've foregone any property taxes over there for, you know, the next billions of years, okay? And now we're being asked to contribute more because Carmel doesn't want to do more. And to your point, Jason, they're going to benefit more than anybody else in the room when this thing comes out for the second-generation rental, right? And that's why I can't, I don't even know how we have this conversation around what we're doing unless we truly know what they're doing. Because if they come back and say they're doing nothing, then they basically told us, okay, we're done, and now it's up to you to fund every other business.
No, I totally, I totally get that, Neil, I do. And, you know, they all, obviously, they're going to allow a tend-to-finish dollar to every single unit, right? That's typical what they do. But also keep in mind, Carmel's come to us, or the previous board, and they says, we want live work on Main Street, and they were granted live work spaces. And then last, last term, when we were still the board, they came and says, we want more live work. So in my mind, I don't see them being very motivated at all for any success of any commercial on Main Street. So I want to force their hand and say, okay, open up, make this happen, show us what you said you were going to do when you purchased this property off Ranch Cap, off Ranch, was we're going to make a go of Main Street, instead of going, ah, well, you know what? If we just kick back and we don't do anything, eventually it's going to fail, and we'll make it into apartment buildings or whatever, and then we're made whole, but the town is screwed because, like you said, we dropped how much on that TIF, and we get nothing for it because we're not getting any tax revenue at all from that street. So, yeah, I mean, it's a quandary, isn't it? No, it's a tough situation with developers. I mean, I've dealt with them a lot in my career, and it's just mind-boggling how, you know, they want to get in easily, they want to get out as quickly as they can, make as much money as possible, and the end user is not necessarily their concern, it's shareholders, monetary, you know, what board's going to make what. But, you know, we're operating on the micro level of we have to deal with some level of success for our residents and show them we're doing something to create the restaurants and create the retail on Main Street that we're going to move forward with, because I would hate to see everything just go live work, which in my mind, live work typically becomes live, not work, and then that's it.
And that's why I'm focused more on the tax credit than the cash out the door, right? So then we've, for the taxpayer base, we're protecting them, right? Because I want you guys to succeed, don't get me wrong. But let's say you fail in three years, you know, then we've basically foregone cash to the next business, but if it's a sales tax credit, it's no cash out of the taxpayer's pocket, it's effectively, we have more cash that we can give out to the next sets of businesses. Like, if we burn all of our $100,000 now and three other businesses show up this year, we got nothing left to give them.
Yeah.
Right, but if we go sales tax-based, then we can, there's really no true limit.
But then we who's sales tax-based everybody then at that point?
No, I mean, we cap it, right? It's 50K sales tax, you know, within the first five years, right? And then after that, I mean, because that's the, you know, out the gates, why Louisville did what they did, is they've got a very statutory plan, like, it's the BOP, is you get half your sales tax back for the first five years, period, done, full scale. And that way, there's no competition on putting your business over here versus over here, it's the same throughout Louisville. Because what I also don't want to create is the sort of, you know, hey, I'm going to get more from this, the town, if I go to down, if I put my business in downtown versus a Village, Bricksmore, or elsewhere.
Yeah. I think you and I are going to, we're going to agree on certain facets of that, but, you know, we did, we did create the baseline with Boulder Baked at $50,000. So there is the one cash incentive there.
But the whole point, and we were very specific when they were here, because they were the first business.
Yes, exactly.
Now, we're changing it, saying we want the first restaurant.
First restaurant, exactly.
But we said first business, and that's where they got it.
Yeah, so I am bridging it a little bit and changing it to be the first restaurant.
So then it's going to be like the first nail salon, right? The first bike shop, right? That's going to keep changing to fit the narrative, and that's what I want to be careful of, and that's what businesses don't like, is that they come in and then we've changed it, like, well, I didn't get that because I didn't define myself.
Because there's another nail salon, I can't get, yeah. No, I get it, and believe me, respectfully, I totally see your opinion, I'm just trying to do a Deal and Doug, deal with you thing. You know, if, if it was a situation that, you know, everything here is a gamble, right? We're making an investment, any investment is a gamble, right? You put money in the stock market, you put money in your education, whatever it is, you hope it's going to pay off. What I would hopefully like to see that, you know, we make an investment in this restaurant and another restaurant comes by and says, hey, they made a go of it. Even though they got the 50,000, and maybe that 50,000's no longer there anymore, their business model is killing it so that, hey, we're going to take a chance here because we think our business model will be successful and we'll be able to make money. And then the next one after that, that's kind of what I'm hoping to see money is. And if it's not 75, 50/50, you know, if, you know, if there's any way we can work that, I just want to see the first restaurant come in and be successful. And I do agree with Mark, we'll make it, and you as well, Neil, make it at the CFO, and that's, so that it's successful, they're opening, and they can make a go. But I just feel like we're fighting a losing battle with Carmel because they really, truly, and I'm not being, I don't mean to malign Carmel, I get it, they're developers, they run their business a certain way. I would like to succeed on this and just get us some, get us a win, right? Because we've got some great, great shops that are opening up, there's Crack Boba's doing really, really well. You know, Menchies is going to open up, and I can't wait for them to open up. Halcyon is killing it right now, it's great. Let's get that first restaurant in, let's see what happens.
I don't disagree with either of you, I just, out of the weeds and into a resident's experience, they ask, they're asking us for what they want from us, they're asking us for what they need, and when residents say, if there's no restaurant there, did you do everything you could to get businesses in downtown Superior? And I can say, well, we gave them some of what they asked for. That's what we did, because of whatever, right? And so just to remind everybody that $25,000 more, while there's going to be some residents that will absolutely lose their minds over any amount of money, let alone an increase, most of them are going to see an empty storefront or not, and that is what they care about. And so for me, helping whoever is in front of us and asking the most we can, I don't care what Carmel, I want Carmel to do everything. Like, they have stolen the bag on this in so many ways, and we know that, but that's not their fight, right? Like, that's ours and passports, and that's our bed to lay in. But being able to help one business in front of us get going that is a restaurant, if the agreement is the 50,000 and that's what we end up doing tonight because the vote isn't there for 75, great, but I want to see, give them what they're asking for from us.
I think I agree with that, Jen, and my, my, my overall thought on like, kind of where I land on all of this is, like, what is the ultimate goal, right? And like, like, I, I appreciate the whole, we want to be fair, we want to be consistent, we're upset about how we got here, we're upset about, you know, things that were decided before we were all on this dais, and kind of the, the hand that we're, we're dealt, but we're, we're playing that hand, right? And like, so what, what's the ultimate goal here, right? And like, the ultimate goal is for the town to be successful, and I think the town's going to be more successful with a vibrant downtown. And, you know, there, there may be representations that are made, like, along the way by developers that say, like, you know, oh, you know, you don't have to worry about kicking in any money, like, we got this, and, and everything's going to be fine, but, you know, the interests of the developers are not the same as the interests of the town, right? Like, the, the developers want to get things approved, so they can build it, and they can sell it, and they can lease it. And the town is interested in making sure that we've got a steady population base, we've got good schools, low crime, we've got good businesses that are willing to come in, that this is a nice place to live, that people are attracted to it. And, you know, you think about like, where this town was ten years ago, and versus like where we are now, and like, it's, it's remarkable, like, how many, like, awesome restaurants we have and independent businesses, and we've really done a lot to get away from just being kind of like a sleepy suburban, you know, town, but just like chains, to having like a thriving local economy. And I think that, that this business would be a really welcome addition to the town, and serve as a catalyst to further development on, on, on Main Street. So, you know, my, my thought is, in the grand scheme of things, for, if we're fighting about twenty-five thousand dollars for, you know, actually getting this thing built versus not, I'm, I'm in favor of just saying, let's give the applicant what they're asking for, and welcome them to town, and encourage them to move forward, and fight with Carmel to get everything that you can on your tenant finishes, and show that we're committed to the success and vibrancy of Main Street and downtown, and not overthink this.
Can I make a motion now then for that? Or do you want to wait for something else?
You can make a motion, but we, we can not, is there anything else anybody cares about, wants to say?
I'm talked out.
Okay. All right, Jen?
If somebody else wants to. Wait, I don't, I don't think I've ever made a motion before, so.
There isn't a resolution.
Oh, so I just did whatever, okay. Well, I'd like to make a motion to approve a seventy-five thousand dollar grant with a twenty-five thousand dollar sales tax.
Rebate.
Rebate, thank you, for BBQ chicken. Anything else?
On CEO issue?
Oh, yeah, payable on the CEO, the issue of the CEO. Anything else?
Second.
All right, we've got a motion from Councilmember Cowish, second from Mayor Pro Tem Serbu. Let's do a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Lasas?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Serbu?
Yes.
Councilmember Cowish?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
No.
Councilmember Foster?
All right, passes four to one. Congratulations. Go get them. All right, we are on to our final item before executive session, which is item eight, which is consideration and resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Superior, accepting a petition for annexation of a parcel of land located in unincorporated Boulder County, and setting a public hearing on the annexation for the Turnbull property.
Thanks, Mayor. Renee's going to introduce this item for us.
I forgot to write down the address of the property, but the Turnbull property is south of Guardian Storage, north of the Sagamore subdivision on Seventy-S sixth Street. The item this evening is a resolution of substantial compliance that's required by the Municipal Annexation Act CRS 31-12101, in order to kick off the annexation process. The step is intended to review the annexation petition for compliance with state law requirements under the act, and if substantial compliance is found, then the council should adopt the resolution of substantial compliance, finding that the petition is in substantial compliance with the Annexation Act. It's a lot of words. So the evening's vote is that not one on the annexation itself, I know it was a little bit confusing. Nick can answer all of the questions about the Annexation Act itself, but this evening, you're really voting on whether or not the annexation petition meets all of the requirements, and whether their application materials are submitted in compliance with our required submittal documents. I will note that not all of the documents are final, so I put draft PD zoning and draft petition, those are, the petition is mostly, is final, but the PD zoning document and the annexation map are drafts, because those could be amended between now and the 23rd, when the actual annexation hearing takes place. So staff finds that all of the annexation petition and materials are in substantial compliance with the act and the town code, and that is all I have.
All right, thank you for that, Renee. Questions for staff?
I'll just say, Nick, thanks for your email earlier this week. Really appreciate it.
No problem. Yeah, it's been a lot of time in this.
Yeah, this is like the first annexation agreement, anything I've seen.
Been a long time.
This is incredibly complicated process.
It's, it's, it's a lot of steps. Wait, just wait, this is the easy step.
Anybody in the public like to give a public comment? Seeing none. Anybody on Zoom like to give a public comment? Seeing none. Public comment is closed, and you can turn to discussion, this is our, is this the first meeting?
No, just a resolution.
This is just a resolution, okay.
So just, can we talk a little bit about what the next steps are in public? Because you, you sent us an email, but no one else on, on the planet's allowed to see that email.
So, so, you know, like I said, yeah, right, in this email that, that no one else has. This is just the, the resolution, accepting the petition as filed, and saying, this complies with all the things in the Annexation Act. And then, at least I think, more importantly, this sets the hearing, this is the first, you could call it, notice of when the hearing on the actual annexation is happening, which will be June 23rd. On starting Friday, we will notice in the Daily Camera once a week for five weeks, in addition to the town's internal notice procedure, which we do for zoning or any other public hearing, which, which I will add is, is pretty robust compared to other towns. I think we send out mailers to like a thousand houses or something, like.
Yeah, a thousand feet in all directions of the property.
Yeah, it's a lot, and you got a lot of properties, not to be less than, but it's also not to be less than fifty houses or something like that, so you can even expand it out. So that's all still going to happen through the end of May and into the beginning of June. And then when we get to June and the public hearing, we'll have the public hearing, it really won't look a ton different than, than a PD hearing, or an FTP hearing, or something like that, but we'll have two things you hear, a resolution of finding, and then the actual ordinance annexing the property itself. And we'll get into that when we get closer, because I want to, I want to write that all out, too, but that's, that's where we're going with this. Oh, and it'll also go to the planning commission, somewhere in there.
So I appreciate that, because the one thing, you know, with the, with the notice of this meeting, it didn't go to the adjacent homeowners, because there's a strip of land that's owned by the Town of Superior, and then the homes start. So Sagamore's not a neighbor, but the Town of Superior is a neighbor, however, when we get to the actual annexation hearing, we're going to go to a thousand feet, which is like the entirety of northern Sagamore.
Yes.
Okay, so they'll, they'll be publicly noticed.
Yeah, and in the newspaper, and they'll, they'll have the sandwich, I know, the what, especially the legal notices of a newspaper, and then there'll be a sandwich word out there.
Okay.
And I should also add to that notice for, to the abutting landowners, that's actually really meant more for people in unincorporated town, or unincorporated county, to try to annex, and this is under the Annexation Act, to annex it under the same terms and conditions, but there's really no, and I think it's the county and then one other person, and then, yeah.
And then Guardian Storage, it's us, the county, Guardian Storage, and then the people behind Guardian Storage.
Yeah, so that's, that's really actually for, if additional people want to annex it, so that even matters for, you know, the rest of the actual town property even less.
Since printed newspapers rapidly going away, are there other outreach, more modern outreach techniques that we can use to advertise this?
TikTok.
TikTok, right?
Right, the Daily Camera as well?
We have statutory requirements that we have to comply with.
Yeah, I guess, I'll speak to the statutory requirements, I mean, however you guys want to put the word out there, put the word out there, but the newspaper is the one that's important, whether you read it or not.
And, I mean, and the, I mean, we publish our, we publish our, our meetings, just like, everything, you know, this is a public meeting, everything's posted, but the homeowners within a thousand feet are going to be personally notified by mailing, so that's going to, that's going to get the word out better than any other manner of giving the word out, so. All right, okay.
One more question, one, one, because, you know, we're going to have a meeting, or on the 23rd of June, we're going to talk about the annexation and the potential applicant's FTP. Now.
Not their FTP, just the zoning document.
Just the zoning, okay, yeah, I'm sorry. So the, the zoning document in this case, because we have a directive from the state to add housing when we're close to the BRT, with this rezone, can we make sure that you include any sort of analysis on how this reduces our available land for residential development?
I can in the staff report, yes.
Okay, because we have a mandate from the state, and we also have a mandate to make money, so I, I don't know quite how to deal with the state's mandate.
I'll, I'll look at that and provide some feedback.
Yeah, I mean, just, you know, the, the number of acres here, and the density that the state is requiring, if you go with one type of zone, obviously it can't be used for residential, so then the town's target suddenly goes up over fewer acres.
All right, any additional comments for staff? Who wants to make a motion? Jen's made her one.
This one's easy, like, you can read this, like, this one's, you know, you don't have to like, make it up on the fly, it's all written out. All right, I'll move to approve the Town of Superior Resolution Number R-30, Series 2025, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Superior, accepting a petition for annexation of a parcel of land located in unincorporated Boulder County, and setting a public hearing on the annexation Turnbull.
Second.
And we've got a motion from Councilmember Shaw, a second from Mayor Pro Tem Serbu, all those in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We look forward to working on that further in June. All right, we're on to item number nine, which is our final item for the evening, which is executive session, to hold the conference of the town's attorney to receive legal advice on specific legal questions pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute Section 24-6-4024B regarding the Cuffner litigation and related matters. Do we have a motion to enter executive session?
So moved.
We got a motion from Councilmember Shaw, and a second from Councilmember Foster. All those in favor? Passes unanimously.
I don't have my script up, so I'm winging it a little bit, but it is the opinion of me as the town attorney, that this is for legal advice, and no, for the recording should be kept.